It's like the microphone's on. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would Ann Grandell with Love, Inc. will be here to furnish the invocation?
What a historic day after last night's vote. Good morning. I had the privilege of representing one of the largest contingencies in this community, so on behalf of the thousands of families in the 20 churches comprising Love, Inc., thank you for your willingness to serve in this capacity. Let us pray. Lord, these men and women have great responsibility, and only you know what are the ideal strategies to pursue and the most optimum decisions they need to make in order to benefit the entire community. As they mold together as a new council, we pray for unity, even if it's to agree to disagree, for mutual respect, for protecting these leaders and their family, for giving them rest while expanding their time, and particularly for giving them your wisdom in every decision they need to make. We thank you for the talented staff which supports these leaders and assists our city to operate efficiently. We bless them as well. We are living in serious times, Lord, and we thank you for giving us leaders who will truly be the public servants you have called them to be. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to ask Councilman Schlag to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
It'll be an honor, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Kurumba, Councilman Duett, Councilman Slakta.
Here.
Mayor Simmons.
Here.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
Here.
Councilman Forbes.
Here.
All right. Now it's public comment from any member of the public that would like to speak on agenda items only, please. Please come forward.
Good morning. Love God, love this country, and love this city. I'm going to comment on D, the Economic Development Council. Taxpayers are paying part of this. I don't know why. Freedom, free enterprise is not free if the government's throwing their nickel into it. They brag about saving businesses $438,474.26 worth of impact fees. Now, that comes out of the taxpayer's pocket. We have economic growth that's gone on pretty well. Is this taxpayer liability going to go on forever? Is this just another branch of government? That's my concern. On E, presentation, I'm really interested in seeing what we can do with Windsor Road all the way down to Woods Edge, which there's a traffic light there. If we go straight down Windsor, that would help. And Windsor to the light at Tuffy's. Also, if we come through there across Carolina Street, these things would certainly change the pattern around the interstate, I mean, around state road and the county road at the intersection of 41 and Benita Beach Road. As far as Amtrak, now, Amtrak would be all right, bring the cars down and eliminate all the, it's not all, but some of the car carriers. But who wants to live next to a railroad track? You tell me that. Maybe we're on the wrong side of railroad tracks. That's always been a problem somewhere. And the city pays a lot of money to the railroad because it crosses seven different roads in the city of Benita Springs, plus it costs us $37,000 to walk from Depot Park to the Banshell Park because of the railroad. So I'm not real big on the railroad, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Councilman Farrar, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. First of all, let me thank the members of the council and wish you well after a election of integrity. And let's move on. I want to talk about the Lee County Rail Carrot feasibility study. As you know, Alex Grant asked me to appear today, his behalf, in part because he's busy with his business, but he's been in the forefront of rail study for a long time. I disagree with the previous speaker. I think the Lee County Rail Study, the feasibility study, will at least bring up data collection and data analysis so you can make a reasonable decision as to whether or not commuter rail, light rail, is feasible for transportation needs in the future. So I want to commend the council for thinking out of the box on this, and Councilman Forbes for taking that initiative. Secondly, I'd just like to make a brief comment on the zoning board protocol change. I think that's great. I think the council is on the right track to increase public participation in these zoning cases. Many times, people who can't afford to come the first time to a zoning meeting are prevented from speaking in the future, even when they have new substantial evidence. So I think you're on the right track on this, and thank you. Lastly, signage. If anybody wants to compare Benita with other cities on sign pollution, take a ride up from Claudio's up to Cleveland Avenue, and you'll see signs, billboards, you know, slip and fall, tattoo here, flashing in traffic. And I think that's pollution. I think that's a honky-tonk appearance, and we don't want the city to get into that. So I'd be very strict on the signage code. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm B. Pat O'Rourke. I'm with Lee County Economic Development Office and also the Horizon Council, resident of Cape Coral. I'm here to provide comment concerning the Benita Springs Astero Economic Development Council. Their leadership and volunteers are a great partner with Lee County Economic Development Office and the Horizon Council concerning recruitment, retention, and expansion of companies in Benita Springs and Lee County. The EDC's program of work mirrors our efforts to enhance the business climate in Benita Springs and Lee County. We are also proud to work with the Benita Springs Area Chamber of Commerce, which is a voting member of the Horizon Council. As you may know, the Horizon Council is the, its core mission is to be an advisory group to the County Commission on anything having to do with economic development throughout Lee County. We also very much appreciate the involvement and mutual support with the city of Benita Springs, which is a voting member of the Horizon Council and is also represented on our executive committee. I understand that the council will be making committee assignments, including a representative to the Horizon Council and the Horizon Council Executive Committee. We look forward to working with your new representative, as we have done in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, council, and staff. My name is Brenda Brooks. I'm the Executive Director of Crew Land and Water Trust. Under your consent items today, we are asking for approval of our permit and cosponsorship once again from the city for our largest fundraiser for the crew trust, our Concert and Silent Eco auction. We just finished this event. It's hard to imagine we're going to be planning it for next year already, but I have to let you know that this past year has been our biggest event ever. We raised $29,000, and that's all used for environmental education for the crew trust. And last year, we educated nearly 6,000 children out on those trails. So with your support, we would like to do that again. Your central location of Riverside Park, as opposed to Crew, of course, Crew regional ecosystem that is out east, so many people don't get to, they just don't know the area to get there. So your centralized location is not only a fundraiser, but a fundraiser as well. Many people come to that event just being given a ticket, not knowing what Crew is. So I appreciate your consideration and your cosponsorship approval. Thank you.
Good morning, Donna.
Good morning. Donna Stone, Worthington Country Club External Affairs Committee. I want to congratulate City Councilman Bill Longkart on his distinguished city council accomplishments. I have had the pleasure of working with Bill on the Worthington Country Club External Affairs Committee. With Bill's guidance, we have tirelessly worked to defend and protect Benita Springs on many city issues, including the defeat of the homeless shelter in front of Hunter's Ridge, the 2013 fight to protect the DRGR, 2014 Water Task Force year-long meetings, the 2015 Route 41 flyover bridge issue, the review of the Benita Springs Comp Plan meetings, and recently, starting in October of 2015, the work to get the new high school away from Hunter's Ridge, the YMCA, and Benita Grand to the proper location on the Imperial Parkway. And also, we're working on the Benita Beach Road visioning study. I was a town meeting member in Wellesley, Mass. and active in town issues in Windham, Maine. Maine fondly calls anyone not born in Maine a Flatlander. This Flatlander.
Even New Hampshireites, my dad.
Yes. Is proud to have had the guidance, experience, and wisdom of Bill Longkart on the city council as a fellow member of the Worthington External Affairs and as a friend of Bill and Barbara Longkart. Thank you, Bill, for everything that you have done for Benita Springs.
Anybody else from the public wishing to make public comment at this time? Okay. We will move along then. We're going to start with some proclamations and presentations. Yes. And the first one is for Councilman Longkart. Like to come up, please. How are you? Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you. You know, I think Donna summed this up pretty nice, but Bill, for everything that you've done for this city and your extraordinary efforts for the library and so many things in town, you're a dear friend, as you know. Everybody in this room knows you and recognizes your efforts, so this is just a very small token of our appreciation. I'm happy to present this to you, Bill. In appreciation and recognition of your exceptional efforts in bringing the Benita Springs Library downtown and everything that you've done over the years, and I know that you'll continue to do, Councilman Bill Longkart, thank you very much. Yes, yes, absolutely.
I even brought my notes.
He's always got paperwork.
Well, let me begin with how it all started when I came on in 2008 and had the opportunity to review and look at everything that went on in the city. And I have to tell you that over 16 years, living here also, 96% of this decision that we've made up here have been seven zeros. But the other issues are part of the process, and it still will continue into the new year and so forth. However, Gary Price was the manager back then, the city manager, and I had my first trek to county and met all the county commissioners. So I want to thank them for finally getting it all together and thank a lot of other people. And the other person here who was involved in that was our city manager, Carl Schweng, who kept after it. And those two city managers are a testament to the public sector in that they do the job with sometimes difficult circumstances. Now, the city people that live here, we had a library task force, and I'd like to mention their names because they were on the task force that was formed, and they reviewed everything and said, yes, we should have a new library. And I'll start with Jeff Brown, who was the chairman, Evelyn Fedor, Ken Pennington, Fred Forbes, Jim Kaufman, and Frank Gallo. They proposed, that was the committee. And then the friends of the library also were hoping that we would have a library someday. And I want to thank those members who are still friends of the library. And of course, Maureen, who is the chairman or the librarian over at the library, and I'm sure she's going to be very happy to be part of that. And again, I said, it's been a pleasure to be on this council, and I would hope that you would all understand that we should be listening to everyone, and I think the council, the new council, is going to do a fantastic job for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Don't [bleep] that. Okay. And would the Zonta Club please come up at this time? Just read one. Good morning. Good morning, and thank you for joining us for Zonta Club and all the wonderful things that you ladies do, and I certainly know a lot of your members, so thank you for your great work. I'd like to read this proclamation on the city of Benita Springs. Whereas Zonta International has made a difference since 1919, working around the world to improve the lives of women through global service and advocacy efforts designed to promote programs to ensure the safety, education, healthcare, and overall economic sufficiency of women throughout the world. And whereas the Zonta Club of Benita Springs International Incorporated, excuse me, was chartered in 1994 and is a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit organization and is part of Zonta International, District 11, Area 6, Club 142. And whereas Zonta Club of Benita Springs Incorporated is an organization of business and professional women dedicated to improve the circumstances of women in all stages of life, locally and globally. And whereas Zonta Club of Benita Springs Incorporated has played an important role in the city of Benita Springs by providing assistance in many activities and fundraisers that are within their mission statement, including this year's campaign, Free the Girls, which is a national organization that offers support and opportunities to survivors of sex trafficking crimes in developing countries to build their own businesses selling second-hand clothing. Free the Girls Project is the Zonta Club of Benita Springs Incorporated service project for the 2016, 2017 year. And whereas we, the city of Benita Springs, are proud to have such dedicated women in our community who unselfishly give their time, energy, and resources to help those less fortunate. And whereas the Zonta Club of Benita Springs Incorporated has named one woman each year as the Woman of the Year, this selected woman portrays Zonta International's mission and is recognized at a special ceremony. And whereas the Zonta Club of Benita Springs Incorporated has supported organizations such as the Benita Springs Assistance Office, Partners for Breast Cancer Care, Habitat for Humanity Women Build, Our Mother's Home, Abuse Counseling and Treatment, ACT, The Shelter for Abused Women and Children, The Salvation Army, and many others. Now, therefore, I, Peter Simmons, Mayor of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim April 20th, 2016, as Zonta Club of Benita Springs Day throughout the city and encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of this wonderful, wonderful organization. Please join me in giving them a round of applause.
Yes, I would. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the city council for this great honor today. I was here a few years ago. I thought it was just, I think, two years ago when we had our 20th anniversary and we received a proclamation from the city, and that meant a lot to us. We try to do a lot of good work here and provide scholarships and funds, and I won't go through all the things that we've done because it's on the proclamation. And I thank all of you for your support. We're excited today to be able to honor Teri Lemain as our Woman of the Year today at our luncheon at Benita Bay Club, and we know what an important part she plays in this community. And we're also combining this, as it says, with our advocacy for, actually, it's national but international work. And we're lucky enough to have Kimba Lengus here with us, who's the co-founder of Free the Girls, who has come in from Denver to be our speaker today at our luncheon. So I'll let Kimba.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What a warm welcome to Benita Springs. Thank you guys so much. I came in from Denver yesterday and left two feet of snow. April, springtime in the Rockies is super fun. So it was great to receive a warm welcome, literally and figuratively, from the great people of Benita Springs. We just appreciate this recognition of our efforts in providing job opportunities and sustainable employment to survivors of human trafficking. And I really want to commend the efforts in southwest Florida, people who are fighting trafficking, focusing on rescue, prevention, prosecution, and providing services to survivors. So it is so important, and it does take a multi-agency approach. So I thank you and commend you for your efforts here in your own community.
And was that two feet in Denver or up in the mountains?
The mountains had up to four feet.
There we go. There we go. It's a beautiful city. Thank you for all you do. Thank you very, very much. And please give Teri our congratulations at today's luncheon. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. I'd like to have Councilman Stephen Schlag to join me, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Megan Contreras, would you please come forward? First of all, I want to thank Wink News for allowing Megan to attend our city council meeting, and want to thank Wink News for all their support of our veterans. It was about, I don't know, four years ago or so that I met Megan. She had arrived five and a half years ago from California, and we met up at the Gulf Coast Mall when the Vietnam Wall first arrived here, and she followed it all the way through. And we have recognized her passion for veterans is unbelievable. And she's always there. She calls me. I call her, tell her about this is going on, this is going on. And she is just so warm and wants to be there, wants to be there. I want to take care of the veterans, the American Legion, the VFW. They know her name, they know who she is, and they appreciate all she does. Last fall, she had an unfortunate little accident. She got dehydrated, covering the story, and fell and hit her head on the sidewalk. She had to be out of work for a while, and when Veterans Day came along, she could have gone anywhere. But she came to Benita Springs to attend the Veterans Day ceremony, and she was off duty. Megan, I don't know how to thank you for all you do, but let the mayor give you a certificate.
On the half of the city of Benita Springs, this is a certificate of appreciation presented to you, Megan, from Wink News. The city of Benita Springs recognizes Megan Contreras of Wink News for her dedication and loyalty to the coverage of all veterans. Honor also the citizens who cares for her brothers and sisters in the field and serves as best she can the same cause. Thank you, Megan. Yes, in case those that didn't hear, that quote was a quote from President Abraham Lincoln. And Megan, would you like to say a few words? I know. She's from Wink News.
I've been talking all morning, actually, since 4 o'clock. Wasn't expecting to give a speech, but I wanted to thank Mr. Slakta for welcoming me with open arms and trusting me with veteran stories. They're not easy, and they make me cry every single time. I've been to the soldier homecomings, soldier award recognitions, Memorial Day, Veterans Day, and there's no place else I would rather be. There are the stories that need to be told, there are the stories that want to be told. And I'm so glad that southwest Florida has allowed me to share these stories. It's definitely an honor, and I feel humble that I get to sit in the presence with people like Mr. Slakta, brave men and women out there. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
And Stephanie Kissinger, would you please come forward?
And I want to thank, stand next to her. I want to also thank Waste Management for allowing Stephanie to be here. Her supervisor was supposed to be here, but unfortunately, he got called for something else. But Stephanie and I go back a few years, and again, the things that Waste Management organizations out in the community that you don't even know how they support veterans. Stephanie and I, Stephanie came to me, and somehow we took care of a World War II veteran who was totally disabled, and from there, Waste Management contributed money. Then we got Home Depot to contribute money, the American Legion contributed money, and we refurbished this gentleman's house. And it was unbelievable. And we thank you so much from Waste Management. But then I got invited by Stephanie to the Chubb Classic. And here again, her supervisor and Stephanie, what they did for veterans over there is unbelievable. They gave them a check for $5,000 for military service dogs. And Waste Management is known for contributing, contributing, contributing to veterans. Stephanie, thank you for that and all the things you do for veterans. We love you.
Stephanie, and on behalf of the city of Benita Springs, good morning to you. Stephanie Kissinger, Waste Management Incorporated of Florida. Your dedication and loyalty to veterans in need is recognized by the city of Benita Springs and the veterans you have served. Your ongoing support is greatly appreciated. On behalf of the city of Benita Springs, thank you, Stephanie, for all you do, and we know that you will do. Thank you. Would you like to say a few words, Stephanie?
Thank you. It is. I know, and I had kind of a list over there, but no, what I can say is thank you so much for this honor. I'm proud to work for Waste Management. It's a wonderful company, and I'm proud of all the work it does for veterans. Just last week, for the ninth year in a row, we were named to the top 10 of one of the world's most ethical companies. We currently employ over 200 veterans in the state of Florida. Nationally, we hire one veteran every day. We are on civilianjobs.com as the top most friendly veteran hiring and employing organizations, and same with military.com. So I just want to say I'm very proud of that and all that we are able to do for our veterans. And for those who get redeployed, who are current employees, we hold their positions for them until they come back so that they always have a welcome home job to come to. Yeah. So thank you for this honor. It's great.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right. Take care. Nice to see you. Bye-bye. Well, thank you, everybody, for that and your service. Okay, we're now going to move on to the consent agenda. I knew I was going the wrong place. Bear with me, I've got about five documents in front of me. Yeah, okay. Bear with me, I'm still not in the right place. Okay, receive the Benita Springs Astero Economic Development Council Quarterly Report, please. Yeah, keep me in line.
Good morning, everyone. My name's John Kozak. I'm the chairman of the Benita Springs Astero Economic Development Council. I'm a resident of Benita Springs, and I'm also employed by Feimark National Bank and Trust, and I work in the Astero office there for Feimark. On behalf of the board, I'd like to congratulate you all for your new role in helping guide the city. Wish you all the luck in the world. So pleased this morning to be here also with our EDC board member, Rich Mancini. Together, we're going to provide the council with an update on our recent activities and answer any questions you may have. I'd also like to acknowledge other board members that are here. Neil Simon from Envirostruct is also here on behalf of the board. So because many of you are new to the council, I thought I'd give you a brief history of the organization. In December 2010, really in the depths of the recession, we formed the Benita Springs Economic Development Council. Economic Development Council. It was incorporated in the state of Florida as a 501(c)(6). We're a non-for-profit, public-private partnership. We're governed by 13 board members and directors. We did a great deal of research before we formed the entity that we felt that was the best form of governance when we formed it. And we still do. So we're publicly funded by the city of Benita Springs and various public businesses and investors. The organization's charge was to promote economic development and job diversification in the city of Benita Springs and Astero and to retain, expand our local businesses. List of businesses, investors can be seen in the last page of the report that was included in your meeting package. Investors can be characterized by leaders in both Lee and Collier County that are deeply concerned with economic health of the region. With that brief history, I'd like to ask my fellow board member, Rich Mancini, from the law firm of Henderson, Franklin, Starnes &amp; Holt, to provide you with an overview of the report that you have in your packet. Rich?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, a pleasure to be here before you. Congratulations and thank you all for your service to the city of Benita Springs. In your package, you have the first quarterly report for the 2016 year. And I'll go through very quickly some of the highlights. Since inception in 2011, the Benita Springs Astero Economic Development Council has had a total economic impact based on the multipliers that are industry standards of just over, almost $110 million, just over $109 million. Total jobs created by major clients in that timeframe are 397 direct jobs. We have handled about 170, just under 170 leads since inception. We currently have 16 new leads this quarter. And we are currently under two confidentiality agreements, which are leads that have gone kind of that next step. And the corporations, the businesses are really taking a very hard, detailed look at our area. In your package, over the next couple of pages, you'll see a very detailed list of some of the activities that members of the board have done on behalf of economic development in the area, working a lot with other organizations, including the Southwest Florida Economic Development Alliance, our partners at the Horizon Council, Enterprise Florida, and all the other folks throughout the region and the state that work in economic development for the betterment of the state and the communities. And again, you can go through those. Be glad to answer any questions about those. From an economic development standpoint, our organization was tasked, as John said, from the very beginning with helping existing Benita Springs businesses grow, expand, and stay here. We don't want to lose anybody who's already here. We want to work with those that are already here to expand and grow, to create more economic opportunity and jobs. As an offshoot of that and as kind of part of that process, we are also, have been involved and will continue to be involved in corporate relocation and expansion when the need arises. And again, we work very closely with our partners at the Lee County EDO, Horizon Council, Enterprise Florida, Southwest Florida Economic Development Alliance. On page four of your report, under New Business Relocation Assistance Examples, just a few of them that we've dealt with, you know, we provide a lot of demographic information, provide a lot of background information, work with usually unidentified at the beginning stages, businesses or consultants that are interested in coming or relocating businesses to the area. We make obviously the connections when it's appropriate with the appropriate city folks so they can begin the process of working on more of the details when they've chosen Benita Springs as a location. The local business and retention and expansion assistance list is there as well. We helped a light manufacturing, existing light manufacturing company with location services so that they didn't have to leave the area, could stay here and grow here in Benita Springs. We work with early startup corporations and businesses, medical office expansion. On the next page of your report, on page five, because one of the things that we've been tasked with and have always taken very seriously through the EDC is the dissemination of information. I think over the years, we've talked about, you know, for us, Benita Springs is so well-known and we love this city and we know what it means and we know what it has to offer. But for folks from the Midwest or folks from other parts of the country or even folks from other areas of Florida, they may not know just how wonderful Benita Springs is. So part of our task is to make sure that that story and that information is available and disseminated. We've got over 8,300 subscribers currently to our electronic newsletter. We do press, we had 16 press mentions by four different press releases in the first quarter of 2016. We currently have 926 followers on our social media feeds. And again, through the technology and I admit I'm one of the older guys, I don't really understand all that and how it works, but I know it works. And I know in today's economic market, it's something that you have to do. So we are doing that. We have just recently partnered with the Southwest Florida Economic Development Alliance on a series of video vignettes that we'll be doing and we're actually in production on now to highlight some of the really unique and wonderful attributes of our area. Our website, every few years, like all websites have to be, is being updated. More user interface and more information data collection that we can get on the back end of the website. Page six is an interesting report if, for Councilman Schlaack, who was here at the very beginning of when we started this process. One of the first things that we talked about was during that downturn in the real estate market, we had a lot of empty space. And one of the things that our neighbors had done was an impact fee abatement program to encourage folks to take existing space and convert it to a new use. But impact fees sometimes make that impossible and too expensive. So the council at the time voted, I think it was unanimous vote, to offer an impact fee abatement program. So the report on page six is how that impact fee abatement program has been effective. And each year since 2010, you can see that we have had at least one reuse, taking down existing space that would have either gone empty or was empty. And by allowing some abatement of some of the impact fees, turned it into usable space, additional jobs. So we think that's a real positive as we look forward. Page seven of your report is permit activity, which is always a great indicator of business activity within the city of Benita Springs. And as you can see, 2016 year-to-date, these are great numbers. We already have, you know, 10 new businesses, three relocations, two expansions. You're looking at almost 100,000 or just over 90,000 square feet of space in the first quarter of 2016. And we're talking about over 2,000 jobs. Those are very nice numbers and you can see in years past, those numbers each year and the breakdown of how those work. Sometimes it's easy for us that do this all the time to talk about what this economic development program means and how it works. But I think sometimes it's best to hear it from somebody who actually has gone through the process. So I'd like to invite up, if the council will have him, Neil Simon, president of the Benita Springs-based Envirostruct, a recent addition to this great community from a business standpoint, and let him kind of tell you how the EDC process worked for him and his company.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning. As Rich said, I'm president and co-owner of Envirostruct. We're a commercial general contractor. In 2011, in a rough economy, my partner and I decided to start a construction company. Might not, we got a lot of naysayers, but it turned out our timing was great. But we looked at a bunch of different areas. We've looked all over Southwest Florida. We originally met at a previous employer, so we had done work all around the area. And we've always had a great experience with the city of Benita Springs. The building department has always been friendly and we always looked at them as like a true partner. And when we decided, we, my partner and I, we said, you know what? I think Benita Springs is where we should set up shop. And we sought out Christine Ross and she found a leasable, affordable place for us to kind of just get our feet wet. And after a year there, we really knew that this is where we wanted to permanently have our headquarters. And we found a space and it turned out it was a shell that was built, I believe, in '05 and the impact fees were deferred until a tenant were to take that space. So Christine worked with us through that process. We got the impact fees down, I believe, 55%, which made it affordable for us. And it's about 4,000 square feet. And we currently have, it's in a short time, it's been five years now, but we have 23 employees. We're doing about $40 million a year in business. And I believe so much in the EDC for stepping up and helping us that, you know, we're investors in it and I'm also a member too. So I think they do some great things and I'm proud to be a part of it. Thanks.
Thank you.
And again, I'm sure we're going to have some questions, but I really did want to wrap up with a number. A lot of what we do is, you know, dollars and jobs. And one of the things, and again, historically going back, when we first started coming to the council, one of the numbers that we looked at and was scary at the time was back in 2011 when we first started, there was about 1.4, almost 1.5 million square feet of empty, unused, commercial and business space in our area. And our goal, as we said to the council and the council's charge to us at the time, was let's work with the business community, let's work within economic development, see if we can't fill up that space. So on page eight of your package is the kind of chart you want to see. We are down to just under 8% vacancy. At the time when we started, we were up in the 13, almost 14% vacancy rate. And that 1.4-ish million square feet is down well below a million to about 985,000 square feet. We know that there's a number of things in the pipeline that'll take down even more of that space. So we're very excited about those numbers because that was one of the kind of benchmarks that we had talked about with the council at the time when we started this process of trying to work. And again, the Envirostruct story is a great one. We had, you know, 4,000 square feet of empty space that had been empty and unused since 2005. But for the city's commitment to the EDC and the EDC's programming to get that done, now that's usable, workable, living space that's generating revenue for the city and for the 23 employees of the corporation. So we're pleased to be a partner with the city on those kinds of projects and those kinds of issues. So at that, I will, any questions any of the council have, we'll be glad to try our best to answer them.
Yeah, I was going to say, Councilman Schlaack?
Just a comment. There's also another aspect of EDC and that's retention.
Absolutely.
And the one company, Shaw Development, I remember distinctly was running out of space and we almost lost them. But thank God you got involved and we're able to, you know, keep them here. And that was so important and the business has grown. Just fantastic.
And thank you so much for pointing that out. And Shaw is a star in that kind of a story, but there are a number of those where businesses have come to us and said, you know, we're having this issue. Can you help? And one of the, it's almost like a Nambudsman kind of a position. I mean, businesses know that they have one place to come and to ask the question for help. And our goal, our task and our mission is to help the businesses. And again, when we were formed, our foremost focus is existing business retention and expansion within the city of Benita Springs. And so Shaw is a wonderful example of how that process works and also a great example of how the partnership with the city works. Because without the city staff and without the council supporting that process, it wouldn't have worked. So I thank you for doing that as well.
Amy?
Just a curiosity question. I appreciate you showing these vacancy rates because I think that's an important metric. And is there a number below which you think we would incentivize new commercial construction? Or what number, I mean, what percentage do you focus on?
Yeah, great question. And again, market dictates a lot of that. But usually when you start getting down into about the five, so we're within a couple of percentage points of the development community beginning to look at adding inventory. Honestly, when you start getting down below 10, they're probably looking at it right now. But when you get to five, there's a need. Because at 5% vacancy, that's a pretty low number. I think that if you talk to the commercial building owners, if they were all at 95%, they would be thrilled. And then that creates the need. So we're getting very close to that point based on kind of national trends and averages.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Peter?
Rich, I just wanted to say that Mr. Simon is being modest. If anyone who drives around town can see the quality of the construction that they've been involved in. So as one resident of Benita, I'd like to thank him and his company for what they're doing and continue to do.
Thank you.
Very good. Mike? Fred?
I would like to put a little comment in on, I had the privilege of attending, it was a mixer or meet and greet, mix and mingle for high-tech startups at Feimark-sponsored. And I think that's a great story. We have a lot of high-tech companies. A lot of them are involved in the software and computer industry. But that's a great area for us to move forward in. And the comment was, they don't take, they give. So I think it's a great job they're doing there.
Thank you very much. And those meet and greets have been very successful. And I know we've got some more scheduled and I hope to see all of, any of you there as we go through the process. Because again, your leadership and representation of the city, you know, you talk to the folks like Mr. Simon and others, it makes a difference. And so we thank you for the partnership.
Right. And I would just add, obviously, great work, great work happening there. Do you have a sense of, maybe on a percentage, maybe percentage is not there, of other EDCs in the area? Like for example, it's the Benita Astero Economic Development Corporation. How much does Astero participate on a financial level?
That's hard to say. I mean, we've got a number of businesses, Feimark being one of them, that don't have a physical location within Benita Springs. Their location locally is Astero. But they have been, from the very beginning, dedicated investors and obviously encouraged their folks that work for them to participate. John's, you know, chairman of the board now for his second year. The Village itself, the newly incorporated Village, is not yet an investor, although we've had meetings and I think they're going through a lot of issues. So I don't know if we've made it up to the top of the list for them to answer the question. The Astero Chamber of Commerce is an investor. The Benita Springs Astero area Realtors are investors. When it was more active and more participatory in kind of covering that area, ECCL was an investor, an initial investor and was for a number of years. So our participation with Astero is, on a numbers basis, I can't give you a breakdown of a percentage. We certainly can give you that or get that for you.
That would be great.
But we have a number of corporations and businesses who are Astero-based that are participatory, both from an activity standpoint and from an investment standpoint. And we do have some from Collier County and some from further north into what we call more Fort Myers proper that are participatory and investors. Because again, economic development, the dollars don't stop at any political line. They flow with the consumer and with the business, so.
Right. And if you could get those numbers for Astero, that would be great. And I'd actually ask you to look at Collier and Lee County as a whole and kind of, so we can have something to base, you know, where we are, where we need to go, what we need to do and what the numbers are.
Sure. We'll have to do it. And we'll try to be, you know, again, it's, you know, if a company has multiple locations and one of them is in Benita, one's in Lee, one's in Collier, how does that investment? And one of our main partners and has been since our inception is CenturyLink.
Yep.
They technically don't have any physical facility, I think, except for the, you know, the small building. I mean, they don't have any presence really in Benita, but are a huge part of Benita and all of the area. So we'll try to do our best to explain that breakdown and, you know, give you some numbers on how the dollars come in.
You're welcome to tackle the five-county region if you'd like.
If we have any from Charlotte or from Glades or Hendry, glad to put them on the list.
Absolutely.
And glad to have them invest.
That would be great. That would be great. I think it would give us obviously a very local perspective and at least a Southwest Florida, more regional perspective. I would appreciate that.
And that's great. And one of the things that we will include in that, because I think it's important, is the Southwest Florida Regional Economic Development Alliance, which is a fairly new, but it is a broad regional, five-county regional alliance of all the economic development agencies from all these different areas. And one of the things that I think everybody's realized along the way is that it makes no sense. sense for Naples and Fort Myers and Benita and Charlotte to all be trying to advertise to the same markets in the Midwest or the Northeast and compete against one another. It makes no sense. So the alliance was created as a marketing and information tool to consolidate Southwest Florida. I made the analogy once, it was like an old Italian family, to the outside world, they are united. But once we get you in, we can all fight amongst ourselves to see where you're going to wind up. So, but yes, and that's a great point with the five-county region, is each of us have our own specific localized area that we want to be the experts in, but collectively, Southwest Florida works together as much as we can.
Right.
From an economic development standpoint. Absolutely.
Right. Any other questions, council? Anything else you'd like to add?
No. Just again, congratulations to the new Mr. Mayor, the new council members, and thank you for your service. And we're always available. I do know that the EDC has been reaching out, I think each of you individually, to try to schedule some one-on-ones. So if you have any additional questions, keep those in mind and when we meet with the one-on-ones, we're glad to answer anything we can.
Great.
Good.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you next quarter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We're now going to move on to a presentation by McMahon Associates Incorporated of the Benita Beach Road and US Forty-One Intersection Quadrant Plan and Approval of a Resolution to Have the Mayor Sign a Supplemental Task Authorization with McMahon Associates for Network Enhancement Alignment Study in the Amount of $135,570, which is green sheet number sixteen oh four oh oh nine six. Matt Feeney. Yes, sir?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name's Matt Feeney, for the record, Public Works Director. I'd like to give just a brief introduction as to how and what we're talking about before I turn it over to Mr. De Palma from McMahon and Associates. We had retained McMahon, the city had retained McMahon and Associates to provide an update to the 2008 master traffic plan last summer. That update called the Key Corridor Network Transportation and Evaluation Study, I don't know that I can say that five times, was really to do a couple of things. One, identify multimodal expansions to our networks such as separated bike lanes and pathways to bring that connectivity to the network that weren't necessarily contemplated in the 2008 plan. And two, to really start to lay the groundwork for at-grade solutions to the US Forty-One and Benita Beach Road intersection. So the plan, which was presented in January, did lay out some conceptual ideas for how to approach at-grade solutions on all four quadrants of the intersection. And so we sensed an interest with the council in pursuing those ideas, so I asked McMahon to provide us a proposal for what the next steps would be to perfect the city's interests in those quadrants, most notably in the northwestern quadrant where there's some raw land that is prime for development. So to that end, they developed this scope of work that's before you today that John will present to develop right-of-way corridors, vet them, vet them environmentally, vet them based on what makes the most logical sense for connectivity, as well as to develop planning estimates and coordinate with the other jurisdictional agencies that would be involved in construction and development of a project like this, such as FDOT, or most notably FDOT, Lee County DOT, and the Lee County Metropolitan Planning Organization. So without further ado, I will introduce John.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt. Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Council members, again, congratulations on your new positions. As Matt said, my name's John De Palma. I'm with McMahon Associates. We were before you back in January and we did present that network evaluation study. What we're going to do today is, whoops, there it is, is just walk you through the major focus of what you're looking at now is that scope of work before you. I guess we call it STA number nine. After we did that network evaluation study in January, we did sit down with staff and we did talk about the number of things that would be the next steps for consideration for the entire plan that we came up with, but also a primary focus was on the major intersection. And that is to consider preservation of right-of-way. One of the quadrants you'll see in a few minutes has an idea for that. The utility corridors, as well as what Matt alluded to, was the major state corridors in this besides the city is the other jurisdictional bodies of FDOT because they own and operate US Forty-One. The County Road, Benita Beach Road, Lee County DOT, and of course, the Metropolitan Planning Organization. In that, though, we also wanted to see what kind of funding opportunities are available that could be extended to even enhance your capital improvement plan, which is not yet developed in consideration of this intersection. So let's look at the major intersection for a moment. These exhibits come right out of that January document. They are just conceptual in nature. What we were doing at the time was looking at your complete streets, investment that you were planning to deal with. We had all of your historic traffic volumes from 2008 up to the present. At the time in January, we were just getting ready to start your 2016 counts. We had that data and gave that to the county after the study, but it didn't really change that much from 2015. So we've divided this major intersection into quadrants. This is the northeast quadrant. Primarily, we're talking about Benita Beach Road to the south, US Forty-One, that section on the left of the aerial exhibit, and then Arroyo in its intersection with Carolina and Pennsylvania. The concept at the time was to try to come up with reliever valves, if you will, for the traffic at the intersection of Forty-One, so it could bleed off onto Arroyo, which has signalized that, I'm going to excuse my abbreviation, BBR, Benita Beach Road, and then take it through the network. Now, we're going to vet those two corridors out, as Matt said, those aren't engraved in stone. We're going to be dealing with conceptual planning. We're going to be dealing with aerial maps that are very current. We're going to place alignments in that area. We're going to look at what the corridor right-of-way needs to be. We're going to look at what they call a desktop environmental assessment, so we can determine. We know that pond's sensitive. We know some of the ponds in that area are there because of FDOT and the stormwater management necessary for that corridor coming down US Forty-One. So there could be a combination of a connection, but our primary focus is also consideration of access management. The FDOT has access management criteria for given characteristics of corridors, the number of lanes they carry, the number of vehicles they carry in a given day. And as you know, Carolina was studied, I think, back in 2006 by the city and even had plans produced by consulting firm back then. Its intention to come out of the signalized location. So that's an opportune consideration when we're coming through our study. Co-relational to that is the northwest quadrant. Again, you have US Forty-One to the right of that aerial exhibit, Benita Beach Road or BBR to the south, and you have Windsor. You'll see that kind of magenta dotted line through that vacant piece of land. Those were one of the ideas we came up with and talked to staff about, and the reason we're here before you today with this STA is a consideration of that preservation of right-of-way. If you have a line on your map in your capital improvement plan or your other transportation network plan, it gives you a lot more opportunity to work in a cooperative environment, even with development that might come through, there are people that own that particular private property. In consideration of that, we try to just show this concept out, which will have to be further vetted out on its characteristics and alignment, but also to make the development more palatable if it's divided in half. So there's somewhat equal pieces of land on either side of that roadway that one provides the benefit of access as well as even making it developable because it has to carry probably with it drainage improvements, basins, utility and other infrastructure. So again, this consideration would connect to the River Park Road, but again, there would have to be another consideration to get that alignment just a little bit more tighter so it can come in opposite the Carolina projection at a signalized location. We don't want to have those offsets. I think the only other reason why in concept nature at the then-time in January when we presented the report, we kind of linked it with River Park going up to where Pennsylvania would project or could project across to US Forty-One. In the southwest quadrant, again, at the top of the exhibit, you're looking at Benita Beach Road. To the right, you're looking at the north-south US Forty-One. This is a little bit more fluid. We certainly don't like to push traffic into neighborhoods. And as you can imagine, there's an awful lot of rooftops on that Windsor Road corridor. So it had to be some combination of a different type of connection, but then again, this is just the concept that we're going to try to vet out in that quadrant to make it more reasonable, to see if we can, you know, again, avoid pushing traffic into a neighborhood. We certainly don't like to do that. It makes it unsafe. And when you're talking about people that are commonly speeding, if you will, forty-five miles an hour and you've got to get into a neighborhood environment to deal with turns, you certainly don't want to have that safety risk. In the southeast quadrant, again, at the top of the exhibit, you're looking at Benita Beach Road. In the left middle, you're looking at the north-south US Forty-One. And the minutia, the magenta line, is the primary line behind the shopping center. Extremely challenging alignment. We're pinned between, if you will, residential development, utilities and a shopping center. But all these things will be vetted out with our alignment details. We'll be proposing the concept of what the corridor could look like, its right-of-way boundaries. We'll be developing different multiple solutions. There's something called adaptive traffic signalization. It's a much more contemporary signalization that understands how traffic moves by physically monitoring it with cameras. Lee County has cameras now on all its signals and it takes it back to their traffic operations centers so they can deal with incident management, possibly divert traffic by traffic control if there's certain delays that need to be offset. But adaptive signalization is something they're doing right now in the Guinea pig area, if you will, with Orange County in Orlando. They're dealing with that and it's really adjusting traffic, the control of the lights to the real-time stress of the transportation network. And it actually is very fluid, kind of like our study will be, quite dynamic because we will interact with you, the council. We will interact with the different agencies of jurisdiction, of DOT, Lee County and the MPO. We certainly would like to entertain a public workshop because I know the community and your council is very, very big on communication to your constituents. We will be developing high-level planning, construction cost estimates so that you have real dollars to estimate to put into your capital planning budgets. Those construction dollars will have ancillary costs in addition added to that, such as what might be design cost, what might be even right-of-way acquisition, what might be major utility corridor realignments. And then we'll put this whole thing into a report. Generally, it'd be eleven by seventeen. We'll have quite larger exhibits. It'll all be digital and it'll be available for the staff and it'll be kind of your toolkit to begin to examine your capital improvement plan. One thing that we have to also consider is, we're not going to regurgitate a lot of numbers. We're not here to take those old traffic studies and determine capacities and how many left-turn lanes you need, how many right-turn lanes you need, or how many through lanes you need. Those are going to be considerations where the corridors intersect the major streets of Benita Beach Road and US Forty-One. But we're trying, we will try to enlist Lee County MPO because they have a model. They will have all of our traffic data from the city and they will have their own to deal with. How can this transportation network that we're proposing look and how will it respond in the future to these alternative traffic options? There'll also be considerations somewhat around the major network crossings for even roundabouts and how those features might benefit some of the connection areas. Roundabouts are a very efficient traffic control device that moves transportation much more efficiently than the stopping and go, if you will, of traffic lights. The consideration for that has to be what happens downstream of the efficiency. And we've been studying roundabouts in southwest Florida and actually throughout Florida, probably since the early to mid nineties. We're very close to other cities like Orlando. We're just not a Florida operation. My corporation is national and we have a lot of experience in those areas of different transportation options to propose with this system that we're going to give to you all at the end of this particular evaluation and conceptual plan study. So that kind of concludes what I just wanted to bring to you today. And I'm here to hopefully answer any questions you might have or ideas or even changes.
I'll start if that's okay. Is that all right with everybody? Could we just kind of roll through the quadrants individually? Would that be all right?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Is it okay to start?
Absolutely, sure. Northeast, northwest, southeast, southwest, however we want to do it. And I don't necessarily have particular questions, I just would like to kind of talk through the quadrants and as you did a little bit here. Can you just kind of run us maybe through the pros and the cons here? And if not this, what for this quadrant?
Well, right now, this particular quadrant, the northeast quadrant, is kind of showing two relief valves. You probably don't need two. You probably just need one. And we'll probably take advantage of the one that might provide the best benefit. And I'll say that right now, it probably will be presumably Carolina because it connects to a traffic signal location on US Forty-One. But that's not to say some alteration couldn't be accomplished with Pennsylvania if it needs to connect down like over that lake or pond area. So there might be some combination of things. I don't know all the different pros and cons right now because we'd have to get into it. There's going to be some environmental issues in this quadrant.
Right.
We're adjacent to that estuary area of the river, just a little bit north of this. It's, there's a park that connects off of US Forty-One. There's a consideration on what will that roadway look like? I know in our STA, we said it would be a two-lane. It's not necessarily going to be a two-lane. It could be whatever we think the corridor right-of-way needs to be to accommodate the current growth and maybe if there's a future consideration that might, you know, unfold twenty years in the future. So we have to consider what that looks like. We'll probably know and have a great deal of, an idea of what the intersection at US Forty-One could look like as far as number of lanes. But it's a little bit fluid, if you will, between Arroyo and the two connections of Pennsylvania and Carolina. I know that was kind of vague, Mr. Mayor, but we haven't really gotten into the study.
Sure, sure. Go ahead, Pete.
I don't know if that helps.
John, thank you.
Sure.
I know you know the sensitivity, I'm sure you know the sensitivity with respect to those houses on tomorrow court.
Yes, sir.
So I think I hear you saying you're going to at least try to figure out a way to jigger that somewhat up north.
Right.
To avoid the conflict with the residences, similarly as the point you made on Windsor Road.
Right. We have been sitting down with staff, geez, I've been working for the city since 2003 and working with Matt more closely in probably the last three or four years. You know, we do your traffic data collection every January, February. We bring that to the city staff. We show them what we saw by those studies, where growth is occurring, the numbers are changing or they're not. And I was very much aware of Carolina. I'm very much aware of the congestion you experienced near the post office, the shopping center, Arroyo and all that. It is kind of congested. There's a number of traffic signals there and traffic signals are bottleneck. So we have to look at all that. It's very relational, Councilman O'Flynn, in how all that works. But yeah, I'm very sensitive to the housing.
And the other point is, I commend you on the roundabout point. Obviously, you just said, Arroyo with the light is a sticking point.
Sure.
It seems like that's be an obvious point of conflict to think about using a roundabout.
Correct. Yeah, roundabouts, I guess for some governing agencies are a little challenging, a pill to swallow for them, but we as professionals in the transportation market try to show them how it works and how it could benefit. And, you know, I know there might be some question when you see a very large number under coordination. We really have to do a lot of homework and almost give them a great deal of detail when we sit down with an FDOT or a Lee County DOT or a Lee County MPO. They just don't want us talking like I'm talking to you in kind of vague terms, aerial perspectives. We have to give them some analysis. We have to give them some alignment details, documentation to help them kind of buy into the concept and see how it works. I mean, they know the concept, they have to see how it works.
Well, you know, FDOT District One is extremely supportive of roundabouts.
We're very familiar, very close at District One. I used to work with the District One Traffic Engineer. He was from Boca Raton, Florida. I did a lot of work with L.K. I met a challenge with him when they were developing the signalization corridor in Del Prado. And we came up with a concept. We had to re-engineer the intersection and it's just, it was a hard pill for them to swallow, but we came up with an idea. We saved them a million dollars in traffic control and they bought into the plan. So we have relationships that helped foster that.
And I guess I would just add, thinking about this and certainly just one person's view, if you looked to the north there going through the park, thinking about where you are on the other ends, not just the immediate of getting off of Forty-One, but where you end up there to the north is a through road that's going to push you to downtown Old Forty-One, whereas the other road's going to push you into a neighborhood, then what are you going to do? You're going to offend some neighbors perhaps, and then you're still going to be in a neighborhood.
Right.
And as you want to continue east... And as you want to continue east, what are you going to do then? You know, anyway, just random thought, but I would definitely encourage you to explore that northern portion to the fullest.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And other thoughts, council, before we move on? Okay. Okay, yeah, let's go to the next quadrant. Thanks.
This is the northwest quadrant. This is the one that has the Magenta curvilinear alignment that goes through that private property behind the shopping center and connects to River Park. Again, we proposed to somehow bend it again to hopefully connect to a Carolina traffic signal control to facilitate the turning movements that you need to alleviate at the BBR-US-41 intersection. So I'll entertain comments or thoughts here.
Yeah. If you were to, and of course, as the I goes, there's a road there, why would that not come straight out? What are the challenges there?
You talking about with the top Magenta arrow?
Like if you're coming off, you see how you curve it. What if you were just a straight, straight?
I guess I'm not following you, Mr. Mayor. You mean just go straight up Windsor and make a 90-degree turn and straight through there? That kind of is, if you imagine a 90-degree bend, we'd probably have to put some geometry on it to slow it down about 25 miles an hour if you wanted to make the right-of-way tight. That's in itself a constraint. It doesn't necessarily facilitate some of the potential access that could benefit the back of the shopping center for shipping and receiving that might take it in a different direction. We came up with the curvilinear alignment because of something I said during right-of-way preservation. It's aligned on the map. It is a way to, I'll say, subdivide a property, almost equal acreage on either side, so that it might not be the attractive development if it were all to be in that one-size compartment. But if it could be smaller, maybe more attractive, and even provide other opportunities to get the traffic off the main street, that's why we proposed it. A 90-degree bend certainly works. I mean, I've seen it in other areas, but it's just, again, it's a constraint. You get that feeling of traffic coming off of Benita Beach wanting to go up Windsor, and then you've got to slow down again. So it just adds a level constraint. It's not to say it's not something that can be looked at.
Sure, sure. And lest anybody see it, because honestly, I didn't see it the first time around, that short little connector up top there off of 41, which is probably the most, maybe not the most important, but think about that, right?
You want your Pennsylvania?
Yeah, that short little connector there. That's fantastic.
Sure.
That is fantastic.
Certain things could be done in combination, just to focus on that for a second since you brought it up, Mr. Mayor. That could actually facilitate a decelerated right-turn lane off of 41 South. It could just bleed into that.
Right.
And then you could still have the lefts and rights at a proposed signal at Carolina projected. So there's a lot of different opportunities.
I was going to say so, right. So bear with me a second. So that's your first, that would be your first release valve?
Could be.
Right, could be. Your second could be at the light, not the main intersection light, but the previous, the light.
I'm with you.
Right. And then, is there any, and I know then we run into the shopping center, that probably would be it, but, so then your third, your third-tier release valve would be the main intersection?
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
No, I think that's great. I think that's fantastic. That gives you three options, where currently there are two in a way, but you're cutting through the shopping center. Is there a way? Probably not, but is there a way, you know, for your second release valve there, so to speak, what's the difference where the pink arrow leads in to where the blue, you know, what are we talking there for distance? I mean, I can kind of see it in my mind, but how many feet is that? Do you know?
You talking about where the top right arrow?
Yeah, because you're going to overshoot. Your second option will overshoot where the pink arrow's coming through, but obviously, you know, so you can kind of just, your second option would feed right into the pink arrow, boom, without having to backtrack, so to speak. And maybe I'm looking at it wrong.
Yeah, I think I understand what you're saying. You're talking about the little distance of the River Park from the right arrow that's pink to where it bends again to 41?
The first, the first arrow, that makes perfect sense. You're heading south on 41, you turn in there, you connect, then you connect with the pink arrow, and boom, and you avoid, you avoid everything. The second turnoff on 41, which is where the blue arrow is, right? You would turn in, but then you'd actually have to turn north a little bit to continue.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. We're going to have to try to realign that. We need to, you don't want to have these multiple bends, and that's the same thing as a 90-degree turn that we didn't really like as a border road, if you will.
And you think we have the room to do it there?
Oh, most definitely.
Yeah. Okay, great. Fantastic. All right. I'm good.
Okay.
Great. Anybody else on this quadrant? Okay, great. Thanks.
Okay, this is the southwest quadrant. It's just quite sensitive because of the neighborhood. And, you know, we're dealing with the two possible north-south arterials of Windsor and Beaumont. So this area, again, is quite fluid. We don't have any definite ideas other than the concepts you have here, but we're probably going to go into greater detail. And if you can see the shape of what looks like a green T.
Yep.
The area that's between both Beaumont and Windsor, it's, at the top, just a little bit south of Benita Beach Road, has that flat green bar, then the vertical green bar. It looks like it's a letter T.
Right.
We're going to try to have to work, I think, in that area. I know it could be sensitive environmentally and drainage-wise as well. We were looking to try to take advantage of the city property where that little white circle is near one of your water facilities. And then, of course, the east-west Magenta Line with the arrows goes, again, near some environmentally sensitive property, near the church property. Again, this is, this is a challenging area, and I think we're going to have to take advantage of some different solutions. While we vetted the concept back when we did our network evaluation, now we're going to kind of fine-tune it a little bit. Like I said at the outset, this is going to be kind of a fluid evaluation. This corridor, or this quadrant, I should say, is one of them.
John, I think one kind of obvious observation about this is to do neither of those, both of which you're running through residential neighborhoods, but try to make the turn up further and come in above St. Leo's parking lot.
You're talking about in the area where the green, the top of the T is?
Top of the T.
Yeah, well, that's why I was trying to give you that shape.
Right.
The letter T just came to me today looking at it to kind of describe it to you. But yes, we're going to have to consider something different. Correct. We don't want to take the traffic through the neighborhood. It was the concept that we wanted to make clear in the network evaluation study.
Go ahead, Carl. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, John, another option might be, and I don't know if you're interested in looking at this or not, or if it's on the plan to look at, but obviously, coming down an existing road system already, which is Vanderbilt, which is farther to the west, admittedly. Coming down Vanderbilt and meeting up at Woods Edge, which takes you out to 41 at a signalized intersection, so that instead of people having to work their way up to Windsor or something closer to the Benita Beach Road-41 intersection, you actually have them go off at Vanderbilt, which I know we're talking about a different county there that we would have to coordinate with, but is that a possibility as well?
Yes, it is, Carl. And it's interesting you mention that. Because Vanderbilt's one of the corridors that was counted since 2008, so we have traffic volume data there, and we know where some of the flow is coming from. So even though it's further west, it's still a consideration.
But that would not replace this. That would be in addition to this.
And when we were describing, how Mr. Mayor and I were describing a relief valve coming off of 41 in the northwest quadrant, we could look at different solutions at that location.
Right. So, I want to make a note.
Just want to mention about what Carl indicated about Woods Edge Road. One of the things during season, we have learned that we get out of Vanderbilt Lakes, take a left, and then take a left down Woods Edge, there's hardly anybody there. And we use that light and take a left and go north or south, whatever we want to do. But that is highly underutilized.
Okay.
And, because I'm not quite clear, Pete, where you were saying, Peter, do nothing that we're looking at here, what was the option? Could you kind of point that out?
Coming into the T area, the T of the grass.
Matt, could you point that out for me? Okay, you're saying go up there and cut through.
You avoid the houses on Windsor.
Trying to stay away from the neighborhood.
I like that, but where do you go, then where do you go south?
You're hooking to Beaumont.
Over Beaumont.
Okay. Gotcha. Gotcha, 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 gotcha. And that accomplishes the mission?
Well, it could accomplish part of the mission. You know, there is, again, we have to look at the consideration of what impacts are in that area because we know it's green for a reason. There's environmental sensitivity, there's drainage.
Yeah.
There could be other factors that have to be assessed. All those things are going to be in our toolkit to look at to see if it's possible.
And if we're looking south further on this, it's probably a little convoluted. I might just get up and point it out. Matt, do you see where my mind's going? Yes, there to, and then move, move east. No, go north a little bit, Matt. South, right, yes. What goes through there? Is that St. Le, where are we there?
I'm below it.
Okay, I'm, okay. What, if we were to go right through there? Yes, what?
It's environmentally sensitive.
That's not going to work. Gotcha. Gotcha.
It has to be vetted out because I finally figured out where the laser was. I apologize.
Boom.
You're talking about in here, Mr. Mayor. And you can see there's some infrastructure there. So, you know, that could be a benefit, but like Matt said, it's environmentally sensitive. So we have to look at it, and we will. I mean, we're just not going to just say, oh, it's too hard, let's walk away from it.
Oh, no, no, no. Of course not. Right, and this is going to be one of the tougher areas for sure. They all have their challenges.
They do.
This one for sure. And then just, my last question would be, where, show me where we are going to ultimately end up south, or how we're going to get there.
Well, there's a signalized intersection here, obviously.
Right.
I can't remember when, I don't know if that's signalized, but, you know, we have to work within something in here. It could be non-signalized as access management goes, because signals, I mean, access points between signalized intersections provides gaps. So if there's an opportunity for those gaps, that we might see a different location to make a left if you're heading north on 41, we have to figure that out. We haven't defined the exact location of where that output will be yet.
All right.
But again, it's going to be fluid.
Pardon my, pardon my questioning, but we're anxious.
No, no, I don't mind it at all. No, I'm serious.
Okay, that's great. Anybody else with questions on southwest?
I mean, if I could answer your questions, you don't want to hire.
Fred. No, absolutely. Fred, Councilman Forbes.
I have a kind of a several overall questions, so.
Yes, please.
Want me to wait until we get all done and then do it?
You want to look at the one last quadrant?
Let's roll through the last quadrant, Fred, then we'll do it. Is that all right? Okay. Let's go to the last quadrant. Thanks.
Okay. So this is the southeast quadrant. This particular corridor is going to be extremely challenging behind the shopping center and the residential development here. It's rather narrow. This lane, if you will, behind the shopping center primarily services shipping and receiving and access for, I guess, the undesirable traffic. So we have to figure out how that's going to work in here. It's going to be very, very narrow. You can imagine something like this will have the cost, if it's feasible, of noise barriers, more aesthetics along the corridor, things of that nature to make it more appealing that might be in the concept as far as the idea, so it adds to the cost of that. Again, we're trying to take the benefit of the Arroyo signal, another opportunity to get that relief out off the main line of US-41 up into that area.
Right.
Again, a challenging quadrant.
How much space is there? And then, I guess in your heart of hearts, your mind of minds, ideally, how much space would you need versus what is there for space?
Well, I don't know the dimension that is there today because this study prior to that in January, just looked at it from, I'll call it a Reader's Digest level, or 60,000 feet. When we drill down to this, something in the desirable nature for a two-lane highway with your sidewalks, your bicycle trails, right-of-way, you're probably going to be talking somewhere in the neighborhood of 50 to 60 feet as the narrowest, desirable. You'd probably like to be 80.
Okay.
It's going to get wider at the signal control points. Why? Because you have to accommodate turning lanes and other infrastructure, because when you stack a lane, you're looking at several hundred feet, so it's wider for several hundred feet and as deep.
Great.
So it's going to be challenging. Yeah, there might have to be some consideration how we work in partnership with the shopping center, some way, shape, or form. They could be a partner in this as well.
Questions on this quadrant, council? Okay. Fred?
Yeah. Couple comments. I think because a lot of these relief valves potentially could go through residential areas, even though I am not a tree hugger, but I'm an environmentalist, I think we want to really explore going through environmentally sensitive areas because by the time we have to build a little screen wall for privacy and all the other stuff, it may be actually cheaper to go and handle the environmental sensitive areas the way that you would want to do it. So that's number one. Number two, and this is just a comment, but in your original opening remarks, you said you've got all the traffic data on Beach Road and Old 41, including, and you made the remark that there was very little difference between 2015 and '16, but there was one heck of a lot of difference in the traffic jam-ups and waiting and all that between '15 and '16. I don't, I mean, I'm just making, here's the last comment, and this is designed for a discussion we're going to have a little later, but if you were to make an educated, if we weren't in a company of women, I'd say something else, but an educated, professional guesstimate what you think all this will eventually cost, just an order of math, are we looking at 40 million, 30 million? And then, in the perfect world, if we get Lee to buy into it, FDOT to contribute, what do you think our, let's call it our fair share will be? Because we were about to go into another exercise of looking at where can we get money to put on it, and I want all of city council to be aware that this is not going to be an expensive situation. It's going to be very expensive, but we need to do it. So can you give us any idea, just best guess?
I can do a little spitballing with the Councilman Forbes.
There you go.
You're probably talking, just roadway construction alone could be in the $20 million range.
Right.
We just had done a couple different corridors similar to this in different areas of Broward and up in Indian River County. And, you know, we did an Indian River County intersection where we had to raise the road up, major intersection, US-1, County Road 510, had to raise the intersection up seven feet. That was a $22 million construction project, and it dealt with about 8,000 feet of road. So a little bit more than a mile and two-thirds. So, you know, you're looking at each one of these quadrants, you can generally spitball and say it's around $4 million a quadrant, or 16. Then you have the other ancillary costs you probably have to invest in on US-41 and Benita Beach Road to fix certain things. What could your investment be? Since you don't own these corridors, you're dealing with FDOT, you're dealing with Lee County DOT and the MPO, your best investment, because I've done this with Zaid up in City of Fort Myers, you bring the plan to them. You do the homework. You show them what you've done. Our firm, with a couple of firms, helped the City of Fort Myers develop the median corridor along 80, State Road 80, Palm Beach Boulevard, from 75 into their downtown. And believe me, it was a contentious project. You had all the businesses saying, "Medians are going to destroy my business." This is going to, we brought in FDOT, we brought in Lee County. We did that project from 2001 through 2008. In 2011, we had to make corrections. Why? The DOT didn't do some things we wanted to do, allow U-turns in intersections. So, they had to provide those indentations, if you can imagine. You need a 33-foot minimum radius to make a turning movement at an intersection that's signalized. They didn't accommodate that. Businesses were furious. They looked at me and said, "John, what did you do? You screwed up the plan." We went back to the DOT and we told them, "You have to do this." We, the city, brought the plan to the DOT and they built it. It was a, it was a tough project. But I think bringing the plan to them, Councilman Forbes, and the idea will, will go a long, long way to getting them to buy in, and they can put it on their capital plan. This isn't something that's gonna be done overnight. You're talking about maybe 10, 15 years' worth of work.
Well, two, two more. Give your comments and questions.
Sure.
That roughly 20 million, that does not include any right-of-way acquisition costs.
Probably not.
Okay. That's gonna be a big number.
Again, we don't know what that is. I mean, you look at the right-of-way preservation corridor we kinda showed you in the northwest.
The other thing that I've seen is that the more we would be willing to put up, the easier it is to get the priority moved up at MPO and FDOT.
Absolutely. That's why we want to go to the MPO in one of our stages where we have some of these concepts more vetted out. Let them run it in the model.
Yeah.
We might think it works from, one, a professional standpoint, a gut reaction, taking your vision to them. We wanna see, let, let them do it on their nickel, not yours.
Right.
And then see what it, see what, see what happens.
But likely, in order to get this done quicker and up on their priority list, we're gonna have to come up with some serious local money.
I, I think the serious local money could be from, maybe the design perspective, taking it to a certain level. You know, FDOT goes through probably, I'm gonna make it simple. They go through three stages of project development. They'll go through the typical, what they call project development environmental study, what we, as engineers, call line, lining grade study. And they determine the characteristics of what the corridor needs to look like. They look at all the traffic. They look at the utilities. They look at environmental. They do all of that, and they come up with a concept. We're kinda doing that now for you at this lower level. And then, from that process, they vet out what they have to invest in construction project and put it in their, in their capital plan. And then it goes to consultant design, and then it goes to construction, and then through CEI, and then it's, it's a process. That is generally anywhere from eight to 15 years. And if you have friends in Tallahassee, it could go faster.
Let me just make an observation about that. FDOT is waiting for us to come back on this. As you know, on the visioning study, they felt strongly that the visioning study was a great idea. And when others were pushing the overpass, they said, "We really like the visioning study a lot better." So, I kinda balk at the notion of waiting for 10 or 15 years. I think we're gonna see something, and we need to see something a lot quicker here. And I think we've got friends in District 1 who understand the need and understand the importance of this intersection and getting it right as something that needs to be focused on.
Sure.
I'm, I'm not saying there's not bureaucracy out there, but.
And all I was trying to say was answer Councilman Forbes' idea of, here's the, what are magnitude of approximate dollars you could be spending? And if you're in their world, here's the length of time it generally could take.
Right.
Could. If you, there's acceleration, there's all different ways to make that process shorter. And if you folks are willing, I think we can all do it together.
We're committed to making it happen a lot quicker.
Sure.
I have a comment question related to this timing issue, which, you know, the figure is totally unacceptable to me also, the, the projection of 10 or 15 years. We'd have to close off the street before that, I think. But is there, I assume that these points and quadrants where we have the relief valves, that there is a counterbalancing force that you could, if you do it on one side, you can't just leave the other ones not going? Is there any way that we could do it sort of, a piece at a time that would sort of accelerate it a little bit, get a little bit of relief with the longer-term plan to go in place?
You certainly could.
Or do you have to do it as an entire project?
It, it is all interrelational, but if you look at the halves, the north half and the south half, you could look at that and envision that for a moment. Those two are interrelational, because they both have the different lefts and right turn lanes. So, you could, you could look at accelerating the northern half of this concept probably a little bit more quickly. Why? Arroyo already exists. You just have to look at certain connections, whether it's gonna be a combination of Pennsylvania and Carolina to 41. The concept of going through that shopping center property that's vacant, not shopping, I mean, the vacant property behind the shopping center, is a curve or linear alignment. That would just have to deal with how you folks approach private development and how they are willing to partner in that property discussion. Those two quadrants would generally add a significant amount of benefit. Can't tell you the measurable relief for measurement, 'cause we, I want the MPO to do the model, but there would be some benefit to doing it in those kind of pieces, yes.
So, when you do your, your study, could we focus on, you know, step-by-step approach in addition to the total approach?
The study's not gonna focus on how you implement it. The study's gonna provide you the benefit of what those vetted solutions, as recommendations were proposed in January. I think it's gonna come down to, we might have some documented information from the DOT, both FDOT and Lee County and the MPO, as we go through our process to see what the model yields, and then we can see what the benefits are. We might be able to propose, do these two first, do these next two last, something like that. But it's not the purpose of this, though.
Okay, thank you.
What we wanna really do, the one point that I made, and I kinda went through it a little quickly, I apologize for that. The second slide basically said, "Recommendations for your capital improvement plan." That's not necessarily here, but I know you're collecting a lot of things in your shopping cart right now. I know you're doing the visionary study. We're familiar with what Mr. Lockwood's doing in his firm Tool Design. We know what you're doing in the downtown. They're all interrelated. So, you know, you're gonna have all these things in your, in your, in your shopping cart. When you lay them out, you're gonna wanna see what the priorities are. You know, Councilman Forbes asked for the order of magnitude of pricing. I was just estimating. I mean, I don't know, but I'm just imagining it could be in the $20 million range. That's not money you, you have the, want to wherewithal to invest. It's not your roads. You're experiencing the stress, and you wanna try to make your community more attractive. You have to make those agencies understand that, but that's not all your responsibility to bear. So, we have to figure all that out, too. We wanna come back to you also, too, with the, the funding sources and where those funding partners are. So, it's, that's a lot of different things. It's not just, we're not gonna just give you something. It's gonna lay it all out for you. It's gonna be a little bit more challenging.
Okay.
But we can hope we can work with you through that implementation to get it to your capital improvement plan.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Peter?
John, I know you're a multimodal guy as well, and we're looking forward to that. I'm assuming you're gonna build in a right-of-way wide enough to have multimodal pathways here.
Yes. We said complete streets in our document. We just completed that network study back in January. It was looking at complete streets. We're working with Nicole right now in your Parks and Rec Department on a bicycle plan. We're looking at all multimodalism. We're looking at how Lee trans routes, you have two of them right now, go through your community. So, we're looking at all those things, yes.
But complete streets, at least to me, is, and I'm sure it is to you, it's not a three-foot death strip on the side of the car travel.
No. And I understand there's also, there's, there could be the need, depending on the attractiveness of certain corridors that have the affordable space without taking too much right-of-way. You could have separated trails.
Exactly.
Separated multipurpose trail, or separated bike trail from the main line.
Right.
You certainly could.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Also, just a question, which is, why not go straight to design on some of this? For example, that northwest quadrant?
Well, let me just theorize with you a moment. I don't know when the last time you folks did your capital improvement plan, but I bet it was several years ago.
Right.
Okay, all these ideas came before your, your former council in January, so they're all new. You wanna get something established in your transportation network, your comprehensive plan, if some of these ideas make sense to you. You wanna get your capital improvement plan, whatever year you forecasted in, to include these considerations, if you think they're reasonable. And then you have to build those factors into your plan, and it takes a little time.
Okay. Okay. So, this can be done much more quickly, is what you're saying?
It could. I mean, if they, if these lines were on the map, you could even consider certain design-build options.
Okay.
That's not, you know, out of the question. I mean, a lot of times, a design-build-delivery package, you still have a little bit more time on the front side. We've done some design-build, and generally speaking, about the first 30% of the process is the engineering organization completing the plans. So, contractor and he or she know how to put the numbers together.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I guess I would just add one point. Steve, did you have something? I'm sorry.
I, I would just like to make the suggestion that if you need additional information on traffic flow, I'm looking at Lieutenant Preswellowski back there, and they can tell you a lot of stories about what goes on between Benita Beach Road and making that left-hand turn on Arroyo.
Sure. Okay.
And I think you've touched on a very good point. I mean, we're doing a visioning road study. We're here working with you. We're gonna be working with the Lee MPO, FDOT, Tallahassee, conceivably DC, who knows? But we, we need, we need to be the ultimate quarterback here and work and, and field the team that's working in unison and not just lining up 10 wide receivers running in 10, 10 different directions, which is a master of the obvious, but I think we, we've got a lot going on here, and we're looking forward to courting, quarterbacking that and working with you and everything, and fit in all the moving pieces and make this move exponentially, in the right positive manner and in the right economic manner. So, thank you for your efforts, and I don't know if there's any other questions or comments from anybody. But, but good, good job.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, council.
Yeah, lights, Fred, or, all right, Gibson. There you go.
He beat me out.
He beat you out. Okay, great. Now, we're gonna have a presentation on the Lee County Rail Corridor feasibility study. I'm sorry?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Carl.
There is a question as to whether or not the council wants to move forward with this proposal. That was part of this presentation and part of the package here.
Okay.
And the, we just need a motion to approve. Staff is recommending approval. Council's pleasure.
Councilman Forbes?
I make a motion that we move ahead on this, and a little caveat to it, that if he sees an opportunity to start implementing an area ahead of being all the way done, that that, he'd come back immediately to, through Carl, to city council with it.
Okay. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, one more thing on this.
Yes, Carl.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We appreciate that. Just be aware that this $136,000 is not budgeted this year, so we will come back to you with a budget amendment of some type, and that's probably also tied to a further discussion you may have later this morning. Thank you.
Okay, great. We're on F or G? Yeah, okay. Presentation on the Lee County Rail Corridor feasibility study by Spakowsky Planning Associates, green sheet number 16040101.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Arlene Hunter, Assistant City Manager. I wanted to give you a little background on this presentation you'll be receiving from Mr. Bill Spakowsky. Mr. Spakowsky contacted the city to let us know of an opportunity to partner with Southwest Florida Regional Planning Council. They have received grant fundings to help the local jurisdictions prepare amendments to their comprehensive plan to help with the MPO's goal of the Lee County Railroad Corridor feasibility study. We would be asking for some direction from council after the presentation. There's a couple of different options available to you. The first being, if you would, making the decision of whether you'd like to move forward with these potential comprehensive plan amendments, which Mr. Spakowsky will go into more detail on. And then you do have the option of including them with the state mandated changes that we'd be moving forward. Of course, the other option would be to delay that and move that forward with the LPA workshop opportunities that we're looking at. So, we would be looking at some direction for you, for you to provide staff on that, if you wanted to move in that direction. And with that, I will, I've also, we've also asked Mr. Spakowsky to give you some background on what the other Southwest Florida jurisdictions are doing and where they are in their process as well, so that you can feel comfortable with the process.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Bill Spakowsky, a planning consultant based in Fort Myers, and I'm speaking here on behalf of the Lee County MPO and the Regional Planning Council. We're trying to help local governments move this forward. In Benita Springs, you know the rail corridor, because it's right at Depot Park, but there's not a lot of trains on it anymore, and the sort of constant question is, what, what is the future of that, either positively or negatively? And the MPO study that was done in 2013 looked at that in, in great depth with a team of engineers, planners, financial experts, and railroad experts, considering the gamut of all the things that could happen that would be positive and, and also going the other direction. And it, when I say the other direction, I mean if the rail corridor were to disappear altogether. This map here shows the maximum development of the rail, railroad system after World War II in this county. And everything else is gone, except the main north-south line that's owned by CSX and leased by Seminole Gulf. All the rest are gone. One at a time, they've lost their economic use as a railroad, and they've disappeared. Some of them are power line corridors, some are, part of Summerlin Road is on one, and some of just hardly visible, except on aerial photos. The, the rail line, though, as it exists, here's what it connects to today. This is, CSX is one of the big seven national companies. And what's in sort of an orange color on this map is their active lines that they own and they run the trains on. And what's shown in black are connecting lines typically leased to, to a short-line operator. And so, the dark line from Arcadia down to North Naples is the one we're talking about. This is leased, a long-term lease to Seminole Gulf Railway, a Fort Myers company, to operate, they operate the dinner train and they operate the freight that's on the line today. The, you, you haven't seen much freight, if any, down here in a long time. Before the Great Recession, there were a lot of building materials coming through Benita Springs, going to the end of the line in your industrial park just at the county line. But there actually still is a fair amount of freight that affects you here. If, the three or four propane bulk yards in Fort Myers all get their propane by these tanker cars that come in every day, and they offload all night long. So, if you get propane delivered by truck to your business or your home, it doesn't really come in by truck. It comes in by rail and is transferred to a truck for final delivery. So, it's actually, has a lot of economic impact to the, to the region, even in its current very limited state. In addition, building materials still come into other parts of the county. Newsprint, scrap metal goes out of Lee County, does not come in, and frozen food comes in. So, these are existing freight uses. There's actually a lot of opportunity for expanding that, and there's also a lot of hurdles. And a part of it depends on congestion on the interstate. The more the interstate's wide, the less, less desirable the railroad is. The more congestion gets, greater than the rail transportation is more economically benefit. The study also looked at possible transportation options, public transit operations, all the way from light rail, like being built in Denver and Salt Lake City, and, and this, this particular one is Phoenix. Or bus rapid transit, which is a, a light rail-like experience, but on rubber tires, and this is being done in Cleveland and Los Angeles and many other places around the country and around the world. Or commuter rail, which is heavier trains. These actually can go out on the same track as a freight railroad, because they're built to the same standards. All three of those actually have some potential here in the future in Lee County, if the corridor is, is available when the time comes for that. In the report is actually a conceptual map of how public transportation could use the rail corridor for fast north-south travel and then connect two points, east and west, probably with express buses as a future transportation, public transportation vision for Lee County. Up to now, we've been able to build roads pretty much to keep up with things, except in a few places like right here. But when you look at the long-range forecasts for transportation, we're losing our ability, our ability to keep building roads to keep up with growth is quickly disappearing, very quickly disappearing, and other options are gonna be critical, or our ability to move around will be greatly diminished. The third important potential use is for bike paths, trails, sidewalks. And this is actually a lot more important than you might think. The, there are really tremendous resources being built to our north and south here with very difficult way to get to them from Benita Springs because of natural constraints. The MPO has been working and is the regional agency that coordinates with the other MPOs on how these trail systems would connect. And on Friday, they'll be endorsing this final map they've been working on for about six months. So, when you get into the Benita Springs, they actually had planned that the major connector would go along US 41. I mean, you need sidewalks at 41, but it's really sort of a terrible place for a, a recreational trail or something for long distances. And they are, are proposing to move that to the Seminole Gulf railway tracks, because it has a much greater opportunity for long-distance connections. And it would connect to your sidewalks on Old 41 and get up to Alika Road and beyond. So, it's actually becoming a really critical connection for that point. The Florida DOT may be willing to, to buy, buy into this, and we, of course, met with them extensively and talked about it. And one of their major requests was, they really wanna know if local governments are interested. Because if you're not interested, they're not interested. They don't wanna fight you, but this is the kind of thing they have done many times in the past on the East Coast in the Orlando area, where they'll actually acquire real estate interests for long-term transportation needs. The Village of Astero has, has gone ahead and added the policies that I'm talking about to their comprehensive plan. They're in the final stages of state review at this point. City of Fort Myers has taken it through their planning board, and it will be scheduled before their city council next month. But Incorporated Lee County had, had, had their amendments for public hearings back about a year and a half ago, but they have been derailed. Not because of any concern about the rail corridor, but they were in a package of other amendments that had been held up for other complex reasons. And we hope that that will get reinitiated soon. But basically, these are the four local governments in Lee County. Collier and Charlotte and DeSoto County also have a role here, probably not for public transportation, but for freight. And the, the MPO is also working with those local governments. Now, what does this mean for your comprehensive plan? It's actually not too complicated. First, there needs to be a map in your plan that says, "This is the corridor we're talking about," because there are spurs and sidings and other things that are not really as important. Those can be relocated. So, here's a map that, that I prepared that would go in the Benita Springs comprehensive plan and would fit in with your transportation map series. Then there's a series of policies that discuss trails, public transportation, and freight, and actually endorse the idea of Florida DOT acquiring- and actually endorse the idea of Florida DOT acquiring real estate interests, or possibly just basically acquiring the right-of-way, and they would actually become the landlord, the long-term lease would continue in effect for its duration. The specifics to these policies are in your packet, you don't need to deal with them today, but the question is, would you like these to go ahead and come to public hearings for your formal consideration? I know you have a lot of other things on your plate. Your evaluation and appraisal report has just been completed, and you'll be having some amendments coming through there. My suggestion, though, is just you make the first available opportunity to move this forward, because working with Florida DOT is a long process, but right now, they're waiting for us, we're not, we're not waiting for them. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Peter?
Bill, first of all, thank you for decades of great work here, and look forward to seeing you more in Benita Springs. A question on the multimodal aspect of this, is there a way to speed that up without acquiring the right-of-way? Not to say I'm not in favor of what you're suggesting here, but I'm just talking about sequencing here.
Possibly, yes. The section south of Alika Road is where the freight is almost non-existent today. It's still an active railroad, regulated by the federal government, but the right-of-way is very wide, south of Alika Road, 130 feet, wide enough that there actually could be a trail or a bike path in the right-of-way without moving the tracks. The existing tracks are right dead center on the right-of-way, and the existing tracks are not in great condition, ultimately, they would have to be rebuilt for serious transit. If they were rebuilt, they'd be most located to one side, but there actually is room to do that. Now, the railroad, we've met with, also, they have some concerns, and they're concerned about, you know, trespassing on their right-of-way and liability, and how much we would pay them for the privilege and all that. But yes, there are possibilities. In the, in the long run, ownership of part of it is really, really important. In the short run, there definitely are opportunities, especially south of Alika Road.
And that is a compatible use, is it not? I have heard in other places with proper separation, is that correct?
Yes, when the, when the railroad uses as light as this, yes. If, obviously, if this were an active freight corridor where trains going by every 30 minutes like where I grew up, probably not. But in this condition where the, there are very few trains and they're going slow, it is, there are a whole series of federal regulations that have to be dealt with, or exceptions have to be sought, and the questions are, are there fences, are there rails, how do you get across the tracks? All that stuff has to be dealt with. It's complicated, but is doable, definitely.
One last question, just offhand, you happen to have a number on how much the railroad collects in fees and from all Lee County municipalities per year?
It's a private company, and they don't share those, and to get that information, you have to actually basically go to each file for each road project, and I would love to have that number, and nobody has compiled it. But each time a local government wants to approve a crossing or widen a road going across it, they need to get the approval of the railroad. It's not like the government, the private company coming to the government for permission, it's the other way around. The government goes to the railroad and says, may we please, and how much will you charge us? And it can be an enormous amount of money. And in the long run, it would be very important, I think, to have some public ownership there. In the short run, that probably wouldn't change because of the lease.
Thank you.
Steve?
At the beginning of your talk, you mentioned that things just, excuse me, supplies arrive by rail, and then they're offloaded onto trucks. For those trucks that are headed towards Benita Springs, where's that offload?
Different places for different products. The propane is, there are three or, three or four propane yards on Evans Avenue in central Fort Myers, just north of Hanson Street. The frozen food gets unloaded in north Fort Myers and gets shipped mostly to Bagel Bites, the factory in, in east Fort Myers. Scrap metal gets picked up at the scrapyards at Hanson Street and also up by the news press.
If that's close enough?
Yep.
Thank you.
Councilman Forbes?
Yes, Bill, how long do you think it would take to get what little bit has to be drafted up for a comp plan amendment?
It's all drafted, it's all drafted, it's ready to go to public hearing if you're ready.
Councilman, the language is prepared in the packet that you have.
Good.
There's a couple of different options, as we said, is, if you would like to move forward, it can be transmitted with the state mandated changes, or it can wait as we go through the LPA process with the other optional items we were going to discuss. I think that Mr. Spakowski was hoping for the direction to move forward more quickly
Yeah, the first opportunity, and if that's with the state mandated amendment, it's fine. If that gets delayed, perhaps even separately on its own, but no later than that preferably.
I'm for the faster path, so.
Mike?
No.
Amy?
I'm in favor of going forward with it as quickly as we can.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Yes, Carl.
So just to be clear, the, even the state mandated changes could take us a while to get through the process. This is pretty cut and dried, if council approves, we could move this forward separately and ahead of the state mandated changes, if that's council's desire.
And I just have a very broad question. Let's say all this happens and we get what, you know, what, what, what we're striving for here, what's the end result, and what's that going to mean for the region?
The end result, I think, first would be the trails, because that's something where there's a, a demand and a need now, and it's relatively inexpensive. Adding public transportation is a huge expense and has no funding source, that would have to be a commitment of regional governments, probably not Florida DOT.
Right.
That's not short-term, that could be 10 years or more, because it takes about six or seven years from when you say go. You have to get in line for federal money, and it's complicated.
I just, I, in the back of my mind, it's just rolling around, okay, we're going to do all this, then what are we going to have, and who's going to utilize it?
The, the demand for trails, I think, is, is really amazing. When, when, when a long-term trail goes in, at first, it's like, you know, it's going to help a few people somewhere. But if you look at what's happened in Pinellas County and other counties in the Orlando area, when they built a continuous trail network, it becomes a tourism magnet that, that brings people to the region to stay and spend money in hotels and at the stores. It just, it's, the Pinellas Trail alone is phenomenal success story. When Sarasota built the trail from Venice to Sarasota on part of this rail line, it's just been this incredible success economically as well as recreationally. So that, that's the, sort of, the short-term. I think in the long run, the public transportation part and the freight part is more important.
All right, so let me just ask this, what are the financial implications at this point, if we are to move forward?
None to you, except for processing the amendment. The hope is that Florida DOT would, would program acquisition in their program, it wouldn't be any financial expense of yours. Actually, building the trail, nobody has stepped forward to do it, the city could do its part, or it can seek grants, or wait for somebody else to do it.
Audrey, I'm sorry, did you want to say something, or? I was looking your way, okay?
You were looking my way. Council, you have several options, Ms. Hunter did point out some of them. The other thing is, the statute was changed as far as comprehensive plan processing a few years back. Uh, you see, we were only allowed to have two cycles. Now, there is no limitation, so you could take this out of cycle if council so desired. Now, understanding that it would not be part of the year or the state mandated changes, but you could go ahead of cycle if this is close enough and ready, and if you would use as a staff report to the LPA, the feasibility study by Mr. Spakowski.
And that's what Fort Myers did, they, they took it separate, Astero combined them with other amendments that were, are going ahead right now, it's just really a local choice.
So maybe it could be scheduled as early as May 12th to the local planning agency.
Okay. Arlene?
We also wanted, when we asked about costs, we wanted to make sure the council understood that the Southwest Florida Regional Planning Council received funding for Mr. Spakowski's work, so there's been no cost to the municipality for the planning preparation that he's created. And I did want to point out that former Councilman Alex Grant provided us with a model of a passenger rail car that the mayor's showing, and he could not be here, but he did call the city manager's office and asked to express his support.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, could I move that we fast track this?
Uh, you, so to speak, yeah, right. Literally, figuratively. With zero financial complication, uh, implications at the moment. Nope.
I'll second it.
The advertising expenses on our part, but that's it.
Okay. Okay. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carumba? Aye.
Motion carries. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, if I might? This is a logistical issue. We understand that some of the council members have a luncheon engagement that they've committed to. We can continue on like this, and when we're finished, we would go into closed session. Right now, it's two minutes after 11:00, you can legally go into closed session now if you would like, and then take a lunch break and come back after the luncheon, if you would like to do that, reconvene early this afternoon. Our last presenter has indicated that he can either go now, or he can be, he's willing to come back at the next meeting to assist with this timing issue. So council's pleasure, I just wanted to bring that up.
Mayor, I was planning to go to the Zonta Luncheon, but I think we should continue, I wouldn't hold it down.
Okay. Everybody, everybody okay with continuing? Amy, Fred, Mike? Okay. Okay. Onward and upward. Full steam ahead, okay?
Our last presenter then.
All right, our last presenter, which is item G there, receive the Florida Gulf Coast University Small Business Development Center Quarterly Report, which is green sheet number 16-04-0099. Good morning.
Wow.
How you doing?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, citizens and employees of Benita Springs, good morning. I am great, thank you for asking, Peter. Allow me to offer my felicitations to the new council members and our mayor on your election. I look forward to a few years of working together for the benefit of the city, its residents, and more specifically, the business owners. I trust we will continue to have the attitude that Benita Springs is open for business. Some of you are aware that the city provides office space to the SBDC in Cottage One at Riverside Park. It has been my habit for the last three and a half years, as a result, to publicize our services as Cottage One is open for business. Normally, at this time, I would provide some statistics, maybe not as elaborate as the EDC did earlier this morning, regarding my work in the Benita Astero office for some recent period. I've chosen to do so in written format, they're in the package you have in front of you, and will find in your folder. Suffice it to say that we had a very successful year in 2015, and that the first quarter of 2016 has beaten the first quarter of 2015. The Benita Springs office of the SBDC has been involved in the investment, both as borrowed and equity monies, in excess of half a million dollars, just in the last two quarters. Even I am impressed and surprised by that amount of money. Allow me to spend the remainder of my time this morning to familiarize you, especially the new members, with the services of the SBDC. And, am I doing this right? No. Try the other one, amazing, it works, thank you. The Florida Small Business Development Center at FGCU is one of 34 centers around the states, which has 50 offices in locations. We are designated as a state network, as Florida's principal provider of business assistance, you see the legal citation there. We work with businesses at every stage of their development, in all industry sectors. We are part of the university system, Florida university system. We have professional staff, and we provide locally access to faculty members at Lutford College of Business of the university. Our office locally helps businesses grow, that is our state-designated purpose. In the process, we hope to improve the local economy and to assist in the creation of jobs. Let me just take a moment, I've been here three years, slightly over. In that period of time, I think probably through some of my assistants, the employers I've worked with have created 50 new jobs. It blows my mind, and I'm honored to be able to say that. We try to accomplish our purpose through three processes. First of all, consulting. The consulting is done privately, confidentially, and we provide the consulting at no cost. I spend most of my time in Cottage One and in clients' offices and, and locations, just helping them think. The second thing we do, I call education and training, the state office refers to it as training. Today, much of those are webinars, although we still do some local sessions. I will be doing one this afternoon at the Lyles Hotel, and one Friday morning at Highters University, just seminars, how do you do stuff? And then finally, we may be able to provide some research, some data digging, mining, whatever language we want to use today, that might cost an individual business owner way too much money if they were to do it on their own. Through the facilities of the university library, we may be able to offer some of those at no cost. Specific information on training session, here are a few that are listed in, for the coming month, in your packet. You have this lovely program, it has tons of information on there. Next week, we will do, be doing a webinar on starting a business, I believe it is Tuesday morning, May 3. Then the next one will be on how do you improve your sales, how do you get a loan? We have programs where we invite both the public and some of our business clients. We do an entrepreneur's law school each year, typically in the first quarter. In May, as part of National Small Business Week, we will be honoring our distinguished entrepreneur. This year, we will be issuing three honors. We have an access-to-capital meeting in July. We do a Passion for Profit, which is really a training program that we typically do at the university, on campus, to help people think about, what do I need to do, what do I want to do with this business? We have 21 certified business professionals who combine hundreds of years of business experience. We have degrees from bachelor's to MBA to masters of education to PhDs on staff. We have certified public accountant, all of our counselors are certified business analysts. We have global marketing specialist with certification, I'm one of four of those. We live locally, my office is four blocks from the cottage. I ride the bike, I walk, and occasionally I use the car. We hope that that local connection provides a vested interest in the economic development for the area we're responsible, responsible for. We try to create long-term client relationships. This is not a kiss and goodbye-type situation, we're here for the long haul. Our target market is different from the EDC, is different from many government programs. We look for three groups of people. First, those who are thinking about starting a business, but don't really know how to start it or what to do, and we, that's where the personal consultation comes in and helps, and we'll sit down, and we will help you get a fictitious name filing, and we will help you do the incorporation and all of that good stuff. Then we work with the startup businesses, I think some of you are aware, for an example of my working with a young lady who will be opening the restaurant at the Wonder Garden, hopefully within the next month and a half. It's been an interesting process, but you help people through that. And then finally, for the up and running business... for the up and running businesses, the small, medium enterprises, we provide, let me use the word strategic consulting and services. We have management experience, and we provide that knowledge. Here are some core services that we provide. We have generalists, who are typically located within communities. For instance, I am here. We have people in Naples, in Fort Myers Beach, in Fort Myers, Cape Coral, Lehigh, Cluinston, Port Charlotte. On campus, we offer multilingual and minority certification programs, and we have an office that specializes in assisting businesses in obtaining government contracts at all levels of government, okay? In addition to that, we have some very specialist, special knowledge. We have three individuals who are certified as growth acceleration specialists. We have one individual who specializes in helping businesses with accounting and QuickBooks issues. We have an individual who helps with technology issues, and then we have a sales tax issue. Allow me to close by thanking my clients for their trust in me, and for the honor they do me by listening and implementing some of my sometimes crazy ideas. I look forward to getting to know each of you better over the next few months, and I hope that you will be comfortable to contact me if we can help you or your constituents. At this moment, I'll be happy to answer any questions or hear any of your comments. Thank you.
Great, thank you. As always, very good. Counsel, any questions or comments?
No, other than say thank you, Rudy.
All right, Fred?
I just have a simple one. Have you had any, either a little group meeting or whatever with the Old 41 merchants?
A little bit, year and a half ago before, while the public comments came on.
Can I make a suggestion? I think that since they're under construction, and since some of them have had some business loss, I suppose.
Yeah.
I think it would be, I think they could use just the fact that you're willing to help, maybe you could organize. I know they have an association now, kind of loose net, but maybe they, you and they could work together to put something on it, they might get some benefit from.
Yeah, for background information, Mr. Forbes.
Absolutely, yeah.
During the public hearing period, I was asked by the then-council to do some communicating with the merchants on Old 41. We did it. Mr. Swing joined us at, I believe, one, maybe two sessions, and talking about what was going to happen and what concerns might exist. That led to the revitalization, if I may use that term, of the Merchants Association. I am a facilitator, and I'm always available, let the public know, I'm available to help if that is the case. But thank you for your suggestion, we'll look at it again. Thank you.
Amy?
I'd just like to commend you on the work that you do, and I think it's a niche that is very much needed, and the target is the kind of growth in the economy that I think is more long-lasting. So, we appreciate the work, and I look forward to hearing more from you, and it was a pretty impressive presentation, and thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Karamba, I appreciate that very much. We really are here to provide the individualized support that most government entities or EDCs cannot provide. Thank you.
Great, great. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, fantastic. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, and thank you. Thank you, Carl.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything they would like to pull? Take a second to review them there?
B, please.
Anybody else?
I'll move to approve the rest.
There's a motion and a second to approve the rest. Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Okay, Councilman O'Flynn, item B.
Yeah, I just want to understand this more. I'm sure I'm for a conservation easement, but I'd like to understand what it means as a practical matter to our ability to use River Park.
Sure, Alex Boswell-Ebersole for the Record, Assistant City Attorney. What this is, is that in order to continue construction of the River Park project, we need DEP and Army Corps of Engineers permits. Those permits had to be extended, the DEP permit was extended, the Army Corps of Engineers stepped in and said they wanted some additional language in a required conservation easement, that these types of permits require as mitigation for their impacts. So, that's required by DEP, by the Corps, the actual conservation easement itself. The Corps just wanted some additional provisions in there, basically giving them third-party rights under the easement itself.
Any more about the actual conservation easement?
Yes, we've had the conservation easement recorded on the property since the park project was created. It is a standard conservation easement. In Florida, it is a state statute where you follow the conservation easement form. This was so the Corps could assert the rights. When we recorded the original conservation easement, we used the Water Management District Form, which is what we were requested to use, and then they came back and said, no, we need some additional changes. So, there was some negotiations and changes. It does follow pretty much the standard conservation easements, but it has been on the property, a conservation easement. This is just adjusting it, or amending and restating it to reflect the changes of what was originally.
Hey, we can follow up just later about just some of the details about how we can use River Park and what our restrictions are for use, but let's not hold this up now. So, I'm okay.
Okay. Is there a motion? Any further discussion on that? A motion to approve?
Yeah, I'm move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye. Okay, great. We're gonna add what I guess should be there. Thank you, Councilwoman Simons, for pointing that out. Audrey Vance, a public comment at this time.
Public comment?
Please, please come forward.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Carl. Thank you, mayor, for being at the school board meeting last night.
Nice coverage, I might add, on the news, Councilwoman Simons.
Well, you know, you got to grab an opportunity to say something positive about the city you love.
Absolutely.
Right? Very exciting. We're gonna get a high school.
Yeah.
Benita Springs High, go team. Yay!
Now, we need a mascot, right?
Pelican Pete. Right? We have, we have one in the, you know, closet back here, might be one. Anyhow, it's an exciting opportunity. I want to thank all of you for the months of background work, and the citizens who went up to the school board meeting saying, you know, we need to have the right site for our fantastic high school. And so, whatever community organizations are out there, and communities, Hawthorne, I want to encourage them to get involved in making this the best high school in southwest Florida, because it will be, and also have soccer fields and not football fields, because if you go and look at Benita Middle School and Benita Charter, those kids play soccer. Okay. Next, you know, Carolina Street, dump that. Okay, and put Pennsylvania, you've all heard it, put Pennsylvania in through the park, north of that little ringling house that's there. You may have to build a little bridge, or fill in the canal, which is illegally, dog in here. Okay, so, some alligator came in the middle of the night, put that canal in there. But you would also, the timing is right for purchasing real estate, and I really hope you look at that, like, quickly, before prices go up. And last, commuter rail. Our city council has voted since 2004. You had the, you had the passenger rail there from former Councilman Grant. I know Councilman Farrar, who was here, also voted. We all unanimously supported commuter rail to Benita Springs. There is the eight-acre Cosway lumber site, which is still out there, which would make it an excellent train depot, right across the street from the dog track, coming to downtown. It wouldn't be in downtown, but great parking for auto train, whatever. We have an opportunity here, don't put in light rail. Heavy gauge rail can support both freight and light rail trains. So, you know, when you get to that point ever you're voting at the MPO, just think of the rail gauge, should be heavy rail gauge if we have rail service. Don't abandon the rail. That's an incredible asset for our community, and the end of the line is Benita Springs, where you want to be. Thanks, everybody. Congratulations on the good work today, and have a nice luncheon.
Wonderful, thank you. Any others with public comment? Ooh, here we go.
I'm John Konwinski, and I saw in the paper that the city is looking at the possibility of not requiring a citizen to be at the zoning board hearing before they could speak before this council. I would support such a move. This comes up because some of the people go north, they are impacted by items on the agenda when they're here. They should be able to address the council on any matter on the agenda for a reasonable period of time, without having to speak at a zoning hearing first that is held when they aren't here. So, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Hello, Al.
Hi, my name's Al Greenwood. I own Buffalo Chips Restaurant and Ranch House Motel in the city. I'm here to talk about the proposed amendment to Chapter 3, Article 4, concerning illumination or lighting in commercial business windows. It states here, if you just read the whole thing, that the stated intent and purpose of Chapter 3, Article 4 of the City Benita Springs Land Development Code, "City Council finds it necessary." That means you find it necessary to put this addition on the code. And it also is an ordinance clarifying that certain lighting associated with commercial buildings and developments is prohibited in the city. That, one of the first acts they're asking you to do is to further put burdens on businesses in Benita Springs. And I don't think the intent of the government light philosophy is for you to continue to put additional burdens on businessmen in Benita Springs. This ordinance, if you pass it and vote to pass it, would further restrict advertising that businesses need to keep their business going in Benita. About 10 years ago, this council was asked to start a new ordinance to inspect your sewer septic tanks and systems. I spoke out at that time that you shouldn't burden code enforcement with additional things. That means you have to have more code enforcement officers to inspect your city sewers. It also said that property owners had to verify their septic tanks were clean. I'm too fat and old to go down in my septic tank, and I'm sure Frank Cassidy wouldn't fit in mine either. So, at that time, I asked the city council not to approve that, and they didn't. So, I'm coming back to you with that same intent and purpose, that sometimes it's not necessary that you keep passing more and more regulations to increase burdens on your staff, your legal fees. All this stuff, when you pass more regulations, creates an obstacle. I have one sign in front of the Buffalo Chips that says "open." I have one sign in front of the motel that says "open." On the side parking lot, I have illuminated signs in window that says "Wings," and next to it, there's another illuminated sign that shows the Buffalo Bills raging buffalo. Now, that's beautiful to me, but it might be offensive to a New England fan.
A Patriots fan, doesn't it?
Or a Patriot fan.
Right, right.
And if you're driving down Old 41, you can't see it, but if you're walking along the sidewalks, you could see this illumination in the side window in the parking lot. So, that means code enforcement has to go out with binoculars and spy, and to say, okay, this passes, this doesn't. Now, you're turning them into peeping toms. They got to go and spy everybody's window to make sure that it's approved or not approved. It's not necessary to do that. The last thing is that I have an open sign in my Ranch House Motel window, and it says "open." Well, that lighthouse, Motel 6, also has that privilege, will keep the light on for you. Well, I want to be able to do that, and you're going to take that privilege away from me if you pass this ordinance. So, I take it personal. Please, don't pass this new amendment. Let me leave the light on. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Next.
Hey.
How you doing, Al?
Good morning, Alan Glazier. Apologize I wasn't able to make it earlier, and then also, I won't be able to be at the May 4 meeting in the beginning, so I wanted to speak at this time. One thing I wanted to tell Al, I have seen his sign, but I'm not offended by it, even driving by. We talked about some of the roads and connecting and like that, and one that I've noticed for years, that I'd like to see if we could do something about, is Lime Street. And I don't know if that's private property or what the situation is, but it was blockaded off with the concrete barriers and like that. And if we had that to where something could be done to, and I realize why it's theirs, because people don't want traffic going through there. But it would be a way to get traffic through from Dean Street to Benita Beach Road without having to go on Imperial, and so it's something that I'd like to see looked into. Then, also, wanted to bring up the situation about speaking at meetings and things. I've noticed, in fact, it got brought up by a non-constituent about the election and campaigning, that, it's a good thing, Amy, but she was out there talking to some people, and as we all know, she's on the border. Well, a lot of those people that are her neighbors can vote for, and so, as a result. But anyways, that just brings to attention that we have people, and I want to have them as neighbors and be friendly with them and like that. But from what I understand, we have people that are coming and addressing us concerning something that has to do with the city of Benita Springs that aren't residents. So, I don't, I think we need to be careful about what we take as far as input, and realize what's going on. And, I mean, I appreciate somebody from Cape Coral coming in, which, as a volunteer and like that, for, that's something that, I don't think, something that we're voting on as far as property rights are concerned. But there's situations that are brought up. In fact, on our boards, we have some things that are being voted on that can have to do with property rights, that are being voted on by board members that are not residents of Benita, and I don't think that's right. I think that that needs to be addressed. And that brings another situation that I wanted to talk about, having to do with the water tower again, because, like I said, I won't be able to be here on May 4. It's been brought to my attention that the carpenter that is, that works for the contractor, that, sorry, did work for the McSwain House, has the expertise to do that kind of work to save that water tower. Now, if we don't, if we bring it down and do something else with it, fine, but as far as I'm concerned, I think we should put a windmill up there or something like that, you know, that'd be up to the period, too. But I just can't see putting up a replica and wasting $25,000 to $28,000. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Rick Steinmeyer, I 100% behind Al Greenwood here. We write more laws than liver pills. Every law has a cost to the, to the public or to the staff. Come on, where's the common sense? Let these people have some freedom. We're not going to tell you, or we've already told you what color toilet paper you can have. Come on, where's the freedom? I want to address this zoning, speaking at the zoning hearings. One time, some zoning hearing where somebody wanted to build something somewhere where it wasn't allowed, you couldn't call your county commissioner, they wouldn't accept the call. Is that the case in this city? You can't communicate with our city councilman about your opinion on a variance, which is a change in the law, or you're above the law, I'm going to vary the law because the law is bad. The politicians didn't know how to write in the first place, and I'm smarter than the politicians, and it works to my advantage because I can take this property that's zoned this way, and I'll make it so-and-so, and then I'm this way and I'll make it so and so and then I'll make it 10 times as more valuable. Now, I fortunate that I'm able to go to a lot of these zoning hearings and I get to speak when it comes before the city council. But it's, I don't know, the government thinks nobody has anything else to do but sit around waiting for you guys to talk to you and then maybe be ignored. I think we got a new start coming up with this new council and mayor and I believe you're going to do the sensible thing in the future and I appreciate your action. As far as this lighting ordinance, I've read it many times. I can't understand a word of it and it's just BS. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
How you doing? My name's Ralph Lustig and I live on Patty Court and I back up to Vanderbilt Lakes. Well, I've been here for 22 years and we've got a drainage issue and we're going to have some big flooding this year if somebody doesn't take care of this ditch. The Florida Power and Light's gone through there. They've replaced poles. They planted cypress trees in the ditch. My neighbors and I have pulled them all out and we've got a real issue. Now, Florida Power and Light's gone in, graded just the first part, the first lot, and we're having, it's going to dam up right there. It just, there's no way for this water to flow. It sits there constantly and something's got to be done with this thing.
Yeah. And can we make sure we have your contact information? I think there was some problem getting a hold of you when I saw you a month or two ago. I think there was some problems with I-
Yeah, because I spoke to code enforcement.
I just want to make sure we have your contact information. I'm going to let's-
Is it right to have John Dolmer come up?
Yes, yes. John Dolmer, can you come up?
Because you and I were addressing this with the residents.
Good morning. Hey, John.
How are you?
Al, and for those that don't know, John is a proud new father.
Yes, he is.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir, Councilman Schlock. We have met out there and took a look at this. It's a situation where there's a drainage ditch that looks like it moves quite a bit of water. Unfortunately, control of that ditch was a question as to when we were out there and maintenance for those that we looked at possibly having responsibility, we're not accepting that responsibility. So, as far as community development was concerned, I had a couple conversations with Matt Feeney and there really wasn't much that the city could do at that point directly. I think that we're looking at coordination with FPNL in terms of getting their cooperation and maintaining that structure and maybe doing a little bit of regrading out there so that the water does flow.
Okay.
That portion of the city does carry a significant amount of water and any damming of that is going to cause some flooding issues.
Okay. Great. Thank you, John. Okay. Hang on just a second, Donna. I'll make sure you're, there you go. Good morning, Donna.
Good morning. Donna Stone again. I want to also speak in favor of the green sheet 87 on the zoning board hearings. If you don't speak at the zoning board hearing, you can't speak at city council. This has been a hardship, if you want to use the word, for a lot of people who are diligent in going to meetings and speak on many issues, yet if they miss one meeting, they're not allowed to have crucial and important comments before city council. I was a town meeting member for over 10 years and I never came across something like this where you hobble a citizen or to be able to speak at city council on any issue. So, I think that this is very important that you pass this. The other thing I would like to ask is in your strategic planning, the dog park, congratulations on something that has been so well received in this community and surrounding communities. There are only minor things that I would ask that you consider for the dog park. One is much-needed shade trees and areas in the mid-sized dogs. A lot of the owners cannot go into that area because the dogs and the owners get overheated extremely fast because of the lack of shade. The other thing is the much-needed agility courses and equipment in each area for the exercise, the well-beating and the intelligence training for the dogs. And it also gives them a great release in their personality. Again, I thank you very much and I'm looking forward to working with you for the next term.
Thank you, Donna. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none. We're going to move on to the first reading and public hearing of the following ordinance and I think this is going to be handled by Alex.
Correct. Alex Boswell, Eversole Assistant City Attorney for the record. This is a first reading and public hearing of the following ordinance, amendment, an amendment to the Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter Three, amending Article Four, Design Standards and Guidelines for Commercial Buildings and Developments by adding Section 3-498 to prohibit architectural lighting, provide conflicts of law, severability, codification, Scrivener's errors, inclusion in code, and an effective date in amortization. The local planning agency reviewed the ordinance at its April 14, 2016, meeting and found it consistent with the comprehensive plan. The ordinance would be scheduled on May 4, 2016 for a final public hearing. I have reviewed the affidavit of publication and found it legally sufficient. More specifically, this ordinance prohibits certain lighting that's associated with commercial buildings and it does so by requiring that lighting that's affixed connect or connected to buildings, including lighting affixed to the interior of windows or window frames so as to illuminate the window or emit light beyond the window, must be dark skies compliant and the light emitted shall not be visible from beyond the parcel. There are a variety of exceptions such as winter holiday decorations. There's certain emergency lighting that's required by the federal and state government that's accepted. Some sensor-activated lighting and flood and spotlights are also accepted from the prohibition. There's a 60-day amortization, meaning that 60 days after the effective date of the ordinance, all noncompliant lights would have to come into compliance. The last thing I'll say is this isn't intended and I think when you, when you talk about signs, those are regulated under the sign code in a different part of the land development code, not, this ordinance isn't intended to regulate signs.
Okay. Hello.
Good morning, Council Mike Fiegong, Community Development. I worked with Alex on this a little bit. Yeah, just to go ahead and confirm and alleviate some of the potential concerns, open signage, window displays, things like that are controlled in a different portion of the land development code. This would not affect your ability to have a window display, whether it's a bike or if you have a jewelry shop and you want to display your merchandise in your window and you want to backlight it and things like that. This does not stop that from happening. It doesn't prohibit you from putting open signs or business affiliation signs within your window. It really is a very targeted, narrowly scoped ordinance that really has to do with aesthetics more than anything. Chapters Three, Four, and Six specifically do allow for aesthetic and architectural controls. Chapter Three, where this ordinance would go, should you approve, can control the style of architecture of a building based on the type of use that's there, building siding, things of that nature. This is more an extension of the architectural controls of a particular site. The bottom line is this sort of came out of a conversation that we had with Neighborhood Services Code Enforcement a while back where they asked a very blunt question, is there anything in our code right now that can stop businesses from doing that that you see here on the screen? And the answer is right now there isn't. So, potentially, all these multi-tenant complexes that have individual businesses and the shopping centers could all outline doors and windows like that, flashing, all those types of things, and we do not have a control mechanism for that. Understanding that the city is very much involved and dedicated with beautification, architectural reviews and in those types of things and visioning and all those types of areas, this was something that staff wanted to go ahead and bring to your attention, that there currently does not exist any type of control for, for something like that. So, again, it's a very narrow scope that really is more aesthetic in nature. Yes, there is a safety component to it and one of the things that Alex discussed is there are exemptions, holiday lighting, safety lighting, flood lighting, things like that. This does not affect parking lot lighting or any of those types of areas. There's a very narrow scope involved with this. One of the phrases that was brought up when we brought this to LPA was "poor taste." And yes, that term can be subjective at times, which is why, you know, yes, there is a potential negative connotation to this in terms of trying to legislate a control of this nature, for sure. The staff feeling based on the beautification process of the city was that, to bring to your attention again, that there is nothing on the books to currently prohibit that from happening citywide.
Mike, I'd like to ask you a question. In terms of, I can understand your part about the LED and all. In terms of Al Greenwood's concern about his particular property, if we were to pass this, would he be in violation?
No.
Okay.
I have a question. Are you aware of any places where that kind of lighting is existence in Benita Springs? And if you do, how many?
I have spoke with code enforcement. There are a handful of businesses that have done it in various locations throughout the city. It is starting to catch on. We've sort of seen the trend moving from the north downward, from unincorporated Benita and Fort Myers, Estera area, down into north Benita and slowly heading south. And right now, like I said, there's nothing to prevent that.
Thank you.
Fred?
What typically, what kind of businesses have already done this from what you know?
The most prevalent that we've seen, and I don't want to name names specifically, has to do with mobile phone businesses or cell phone retail businesses where you can go in and buy a new phone or a new plan and things like that. Whether it's an independent contractor or a larger global corporation, we've seen that as the most prevalent example within the city. But it can be common to any business really as a mechanism to draw your attention to it. So, it's not just, that's just what we've seen so far.
Yeah, right. I mean, Councilman Schlock does a good point. This is basically an extreme form. Al Greenwood, who expressed some concerns here, what would not be in violation?
No.
Any others that come to mind that would be in violation? Current businesses that have been there a long time, short, I guess, long time, short time? What we're trying to do here is mix a balance as you can-
Right.
-strike a balance, as you can imagine, between businesses that have been here a long time, not some new gimmick like this or what have you.
Sure.
And, you know, weigh the business interest versus the public interest.
Mr. Mayor, as Mike indicated, there's probably about seven businesses in the city right now that are doing this. From what we can tell, they use white lights so far as opposed to something in color. And in terms of the type of business, yes, the phones, but also restaurants and small convenience stores is what we're seeing. So, and, you know, I can't tell you right now of the seven, how many are long-term businesses versus short-term business. The question is the aesthetic.
And let me drill down a little further. What's the line of demarcation? Because honestly, I mean, when I'm looking at those two, of course, this is my eyeball. The one to the right's offensive, the one to the left, not so much. So, what is our line of demarcation here?
I believe in the way the ordinance is currently written, it has to do with location and the ability to project beyond the property with that type of lights. I don't necessarily think it's a, it's a color control component as much as it is a location stylistic concern.
Carl?
Mr. Mayor, I will tell you that if the city continues to allow this, it will proliferate. We've seen that in other communities. Actually, I'll admit it, I'm the one that brought this to the attention of our staff because I was visiting another municipality and it is significant in that city.
Well, I can, as I drive up 41, I'm not up there that often at night, but I, the Cricket, I think it's Cricket, phone store in Fort Myers is one that jumps out at me literally and figuratively. So, that I have seen. So, bless you, Audrey. Any other thoughts or comments here, Council? Mike?
I just want to make sure that it's not going to prohibit any of the normal neon lights like a Budweiser sign in Mr. Greenwood's establishment, neon open signs. That's all.
Those- Buffalo Bills, whatever.
Sure. Those types of areas are controlled within Chapter Six of the sign code that have to do with, it's a percentage calculation for how much of your window area you can, you can use to advertise. So, that'd be under a different portion of the code. This would not conflict with that portion.
Okay. So, the part that says the, that the light can't be visible beyond the parcel, that's confined because it says no light emitted from such lighting. So, such lighting would be the window frame-based LED and not the neon Budweiser sign or open sign.
Well, another thing to keep in mind, it's because you brought that up, yes is the answer. But the other thing to keep in mind is that this does not just target LEDs. I want to make sure that was clear, that that was a concern that came up at the LPA was, is this a target on LEDs? Why would you do that? They're energy efficient, so on and so forth. This is not a target on LEDs per se. It is a target on the excessively bright, I guess, type of aesthetic lighting that, again, the conflict is there in terms of the beautification, the architectural, you know, does that really add to the architecture of a building or design in terms like that? And I think that was the way it was being presented and thought through. So, yeah.
Pete?
Yeah, I would just add one point, particularly with the underlay, that it does not affect Buffalo Chips and what he's doing today. I actually think the proliferation of this has a negative effect, not just on the public, but on other businesses as well. We're trying to attract and we have great businesses in town and we don't want hockey talk. And doing that adversely affects the business community. So, that's one of the reasons why I'm in favor of this.
I just think it might be good to clarify with specific wording, what kind of lights these are. I mean, I look at this and I see it's LED rope lighting. That's probably not the technical thing. But, because you could do this without LED lights also. You could just put 100 lights all around the surrounding.
Correct. And that's why we didn't want to just target LEDs per se as much as it is the location of where these lights are going to create a specific type of mood.
But you feel comfortable in this, in the way you've described the lighting in here, that it refers solely to these kinds of operations?
Correct. It's a very narrow scope as it's presented.
Other comments, Council? Okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you.
You need a public hearing?
Okay. I was going to say, Alex, do you want to?
It's at your pleasure. You can make a motion if you want to approve.
Do we have to have a public hearing?
Yeah, you do have to have a public hearing, actually.
Well, as I look at these pictures here, what bothers me is that bright light shining out, not the, not the, not the window display. I know you're not talking about that, but that's, that's what blinds you. That's worse than the thing that goes around.
Good point. Another good point by Rick Steinmeyer. Actually, I believe the wall packs are already illegal, that you should have shielded lighting. I want to thank again the city manager because this is an aesthetic and for Councilman Flynn, oh Flynn, sorry, that yes, just think maybe you would have a massage, and I was a massage therapist, okay? Massage establishment connected with that kind of lighting. Then you start talking about, that doesn't really look right. This, this is exactly what we don't want to have in Benita Springs. We want the beautiful architectural quality lighting to enhance our buildings, to say, "We're a superb community that's, that is concerned about our businesses." We want to attract great businesses, as you said, Councilman O'Flynn. And this, again, figures into our dark skies orientation. And I was so pleased, I had no idea this was coming up, but there are a couple of businesses, there's one on Benita Beach- businesses, there's one on Benita Beach Road that has employed this over in District Three, and I am starting to see it around. I would encourage you to pass this ordinance. Thanks. And I think, I also think that your staff has done an excellent job in crafting the language for this, because, you know, Al Greenwood's come in about lights before, and Al and I, you know, friends that we may be, have disagreed at times. But he has seen that the city has worked with him, and I don't think anybody, go Bills, is gonna take down the Buffalo Bills sign in his business because Bill fans wouldn't let him. Thank you.
Amen to that. Fred?
I was gonna make a motion when we move forward with this. I think what's, it's got to go to another reading, doesn't it?
And I guess I would just have one question. You said, Carl, you've identified seven businesses in town currently that are in violation.
Yes, that's my understanding.
They're not gonna be grandfathered in, they're gonna be asked to change their ways.
They'll be asked to comply within sixty days.
Right. And one of them is not Buffalo Chips.
That's correct.
All right.
All right.
Or the Buffalo Bills. Yes, Buffalo Bill, please.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Al Greenwood, again, I'll comment on what Carl said. There's only seven infractions in the city. Now, you're gonna pass a new ordinance to control these seven? That means code enforcement has to work, legal department has to work, he has to monitor it, and then you gotta pay all these people to enact this. If you just do nothing, it'll go away, or have him write a letter to seven people, please don't have these gaudy displays. And most people will comply. I just don't see official regulations necessary. Thank you.
All right. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
One, one.
Fred?
Who is the secondor?
Stephen Schlock.
Once the sixty-day notice is given, how long do they have to correct it?
Sixty days.
Notice is gonna be giving, given immediately upon its effective date, and then they'll have sixty days to comply.
Ninety.
So three months total.
I don't know. I could be persuaded, six was a better number. Because I think, it's already there, it's not gonna hurt if it stays up three more months and gives them more time to make adjustments. Get them done.
Pete? Your thoughts?
I'm happy with the way it's written.
Me, too.
Do we need to make another motion? Counsel's pleasure.
Well, we must, we must vote on this.
Leave it, leave it as it, okay, there's a first and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karumba?
Aye.
Councilman Sackta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Mixed thoughts, but there you go.
Okay, city attorneys.
Okay, there's been a suggestion that we take a brief break. It is eleven fifty-five. How about twelve, twelve oh five, ten-minute break? Is that a problem? Okay.